Okay, okay. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. I kinda like to have them screen nights and big for the block. The first item on the agenda is the, well, it's July 20th, 2017. And the first item on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Rainey?
Present.
Commissioner Lucas?
Present.
Commissioner Burks?
Present.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Present.
Mayor Carroll?
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the prayer and pledge, if you'll please stand. And if you bow with me. Thank you, Lord, for giving us the opportunity to serve you and to come in this wonderful community and just have the opportunity to see so many great people and great things. Please guide us and direct us if we make decisions tonight. May we consider everyone, all the citizens, and their wants and needs and the items on the agenda that we have great consideration with concernment and look for ways to make the community what we need it to be, in Jesus' name, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And just a reminder, if everybody wants to turn on their mics, I was already the first person to forget, so. The, I don't know, I might have to gather those glasses. The next item would be the approval of the agenda.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, we would like to, this was an oversight on staff as we're working on the agenda. I would like to respectfully ask that the board add one item to the agenda that wasn't there. As you're looking at the agenda, it would be, we will be adding item 12P.
Say that again?
It would be under new business, section 12, 12P, just at the end. And, as if we don't have enough on the agenda, I know it's long, I apologize, but it has to do with a school funding request. And we'd like to have that there at the end of the night, just for the purpose of some discussions it will play into where we are tonight. And as a part of that, there's someone who would like to make a request or discussion for that. We discussed that would have them under section seven, public announcements, and ask them, so if it's a pleasure of the board, if they would simply consider this agenda with addition of one presentation at public announcements and addition of 12P.
Okay, any other corrections to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Oh, he started talking, confused me.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, public hearing. And we don't have a public hearing. Item five, citizens' comments. If, do we have any citizens?
Mayor, there was one person tonight, Ms. Donna Brooks.
Okay. Welcome, you know the routine, if you'll just give us your name and address.
Donna Brooks, I live at 7315 Chester Road. First thing I want to say is we really appreciate the new speakers, but I just tried to listen to the planning commission meeting and some people didn't turn their speakers on or they didn't have them close enough. So, pay attention to that, I appreciate it. I'm sure everybody would appreciate it. What I really want to talk about tonight is, in the planning commission, it talked about, the traffic study said that Old Nashville Road would not be affected by the additional houses. And I think, I remember in one of the meetings where it said that Old Nashville Road is not even a standard road for the current residents. So I don't see how that study was done, that it couldn't say that. The one on Cumberland Drive, I know we have discussions going on about the intersection at Highway 100, but if we keep approving houses before we have a final plan for that, and I'm anticipating that would take a year at least to get that done, what are we going to do in the meantime? And the third thing is, is if we are planning on doing something different for our town with our master plan that's coming up here soon, why would we continue to approve houses that are not going to meet those standards, I don't think? As far as the size of the lots, the masonry products that they use, and those kinds of things. So, I'm just opposed to doing any more puts. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the only comments. Okay, and the next item would be awards and recognition. Anybody have any tonight? Okay. We have another team, right, going to, do you want to mention that here or somewhere else?
Now's fine, thank you, Mayor. The U-12 baseball team participated in the state tournament last week. They were runners-up in the state and they will be playing in the Dixie Youth World Series beginning August the 5th, and that will be in Oxford, Alabama. So.
Thank you, exciting stuff. The next item is public announcements. And Mr. Putnam, are you doing that, if you'd like to come up and join us at the mic? We're saving them from having to stay late tonight, so they can present and then we'll have their item for discussion.
I appreciate that, I've been out at the baseball field all day today, so. Yeah, so what we're asking for, we're just requesting from the city some assistance for the baseball program. We are, we just, we get limited funding as it is from the school and just our fundraising efforts, it's just, it's only able to supplement what we need, not really for any capital improvements. So we really just are wanting some help to get our fields up to par. For those of you don't know, we're hosting kind of a national championship this year, so we have teams from all over the country that are coming to Fairview, spending money in Fairview. And with more help and bumping our facilities up, we could have that more often. And that would be great for the city and for the school, for that recognition. So, some of the things that we're looking for, asking, we're asking for some money for press boxes, right now we're just setting up tables and chairs. And that would be for both us and the softball team. We got a good quote from somebody that would be able to do both at a reasonable price. If we could have a better lawnmower, that was better for, that was just for us, because right now, me and my dad are using personal mowers to mow our grass and just some other things for the field improvements, backstops, things for our little fence in front of the dugouts. Just little things like that. I know that they sent a PowerPoint, I guess, it's not.
They did, and I did not forward that on, so I apologize. But I'm actually looking at it, I was hoping that I could plug in, I don't know that we have that capability.
Say, sissy sugarhead, you could.
We do?
Yeah.
Well, I can, whatever Coach leaves off, I can go through.
Yeah, and there were some new bases, we need some new bases. Can't think of any, what the other things I can pull it up on my phone. Let's see, we had listed press box, lawnmower, the dugout rail paddings, the barrier net, backstop padding, oh, a pitching machine, we could really use a pitching machine to continue to help develop our players' bases, a pallet of field conditioner, because we have some low spots in our dirt area, and just some other miscellaneous thing that would include shipping and maybe some gravel to go around some different areas. So those are the things, so, kind of the request we're asking for is $22,500, that would cover all of those different things. And so, that's what we're looking, we're asking for.
If I may, just add a couple of things. One, as Coach said, this would not only benefit the high school baseball program, I get, and softball program, but would also benefit the middle school baseball and softball programs as well, because they use those facilities, is that right?
That's correct.
So we have a press box for each of those two fields, and then the mower. I will say this, just one thing, and I know that there's an agenda item that we added on that's actually for the funding, but this is part of money that we'd already budgeted out of the school's facilities money earlier, I guess, well, earlier this year when we passed the budget. But I took a softball team down to Loretto a couple of weeks ago, and that park down there, I guess it's a city-owned park that their high school plays on, but it's an absolutely amazing facility, it's probably second to none in the state. And so anything that we can do to improve the athletic facilities, whether it be that are operated by the Williamson County Parks and Recs or by the schools, school system, then we need to consider doing that. I think upgrading this and having some of these tournaments and some people come into town and see the improvement of these facilities will only benefit not only the baseball program, but also the community as well, so. Thank you.
And thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Do you have a question? How many teams will be participating in this tournament?
There's over 100 teams that are throughout Middle Tennessee. We're playing, they're playing 12 games over the series of yesterday through Saturday. So, but yeah, there are hundreds of teams that are playing, mostly in the metro Nashville area, but Jim Warren Field is also hosting some places. Vanderbilt is the big host site, so like the championship games we played at Vanderbilt University and stuff.
How many teams will be playing here in Fairview?
Probably 36 to 40 teams, because there's very few that play twice at our field. So every day we have six, eight, nine different teams playing.
And I assume they all bring family and their friends to come watch?
Yes, sir, yes, they do.
So it seems like it could have a pretty good economic impact on the city.
Definitely, for sure. And they're coming from Cincinnati, Detroit, Louisiana, I mean, they're coming from all over the place.
Thank you.
Okay, if that's all from the board, we appreciate you coming, and I'm sure somebody will notify you if this goes through.
Yes, thank you guys for all that you do.
Thank you. Okay, next item is staff comments, and we'll just start off with Ms. Johnson. Do you have anything? Okay. Would you like to introduce Michelle for those that maybe didn't get to come to the open house?
I can, this is Michelle Martel, our new admin assistant, and she's here tonight, just kind of seeing how things roll. She will be filling in for me at the next meeting, because I'll be on vacation.
Okay, great. Okay, Kristen, do you?
I don't have any tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments from city?
Mayor, one thing, and I asked Kristen to do this, and I know we have a couple of items on the agenda, specifically items 12C, D, E, and F, that are related to some proposed annexations and rezonings subsequent. The process for that's changed, we've had a couple of meetings and it's rather confusing process, so I talked to Kristen a few minutes ago, early before the meeting, and she has a bit of a cheat sheet, she can walk down and just kind of explain to us the new process so we can understand why we have what we have on the agenda. So if we could offer just a minute or two for Kristen to kind of walk us through what that process is, I think it will help us as we get into those four items on the agenda. So if we could take just a moment, we think that'd be educational for us, so.
Great, thank you.
So the rules on annexation were formally changed in 2015, and the process for doing annexation by the owner's consent or owner's request, there's a step-by-step process that has to be followed. You have to first receive a written letter seeking annexation signed by all of the legal owners of record. If the municipality is interested in pursuing that annexation, there will be an annexation report and plan of services prepared, that is where we are tonight with one of the items on the agenda. The annexation report and plan of services will be reviewed with the governing body, and this board, if they so choose, will offer approval to proceed to the next step. If the approval is received, the plan of services will then be submitted to the planning commission for review, and the planning commission has 90 days after receiving the submission of the plan of services to render an opinion on that plan of services, and they will send that back to the board of commissioners. The board of commissioners will then adopt a proposed annexation by owner consent resolution, which sets out the territory proposed to be annexed, and that will include the plan of services as well. Following the adoption of that, the proposed annexation by owner consent resolution has to be posted in three public places in the territory proposed to be annexed, and in three public places within the municipality as well. There will then be a public hearing notice published on the plan of services and a newspaper of general circulation, 15 days minimum prior to the hearing. That notice has to include the time, place, purpose of the hearing, as well as the location of the proposed hearing. The public hearing notice will be published in a newspaper of general circulation. If the municipality does not, it's also supposed to be posted in school, if there's a county school system or if there's a separate municipal school system, there has to be written notice to the affected county school systems. And that should be done as soon as practicable, but in no event less than 30 days before the public hearing, and that's mandatory. Then there will be, a mailing will be sent to property owners in the area being proposed for the annexation with a copy of the proposed annexation by owner consent resolution, which will include the plan of services, and that will be sent out a minimum of 14 days prior to the public hearing on the proposed annexation. Then they will, the body of, the board of commissioners will conduct public hearings on the annexation and the plan of services as advertised. Following the public hearings, they will, the board will adopt an annexation by owner consent resolution, which approves the annexation and the plan of services. And then the territory is immediately annexed upon adoption of the annexation by owner consent resolution. Commence the ordinance process to zone the territory newly annexed into the corporate limits. Commence the process to place the territory in the appropriate districts as may be required by charter code, that's if you have council wards, school district wards, packaged liquor store areas, et cetera. We'll send a welcome letter to the annexed property owners with other general information about municipal services. We'll then record the adopted annexation by owner consent resolution with the county register of deeds. We'll send the adopted annexation by owner consent resolution to the Tennessee comptroller's office and to the property assessor in each affected county. We'll send the adopted plan of services to the mayor of the county where the annexed property lies. We'll then forward a copy of the adopted annexation by owner consent resolution, as well as the portion of the plan of services, which is related to emergency services and a detailed map of the annexed area to any affected emergency communications district. And then, following that, we'll commence the provision of day-to-day city services such as police, fire, code enforcement, to that newly annexed territory immediately following the 30th day, following the election certification.
Kristen?
Yes?
Hold up. Slow down just a minute. Let me, let me, let me, let me hold, let me slow down just a minute. What, let's back up to kind of the beginning of that. What we want to do is just kind of explain the reason that you have the order of items on the agenda, is you have the order of items on the agenda. The short version is, in times past, there was a lot of work done by the proposed builder, developer, planning commission, behind the scenes before an item ever made it to the board of commissioners, and the board of commissioners would decide if they were in favor of that item or not. What you have before you, the new rule effectively reverses that, and it provides for the board of commissioners to express some interest in the project to go forward or not go forward before those levels of work and bodies of work take place. So rather than have all of that go to the planning commission two or three times, make it to the board with the time and effort that goes in, you've just simply reversed it, and this gives the board the opportunity to determine whether or not they have an interest on the front end of the project rather than the back end of the project. Is that relatively?
That's a good short summary compared to what I was reading, yeah.
Well, actually, I found it interesting. I did have to giggle at the requirements now, it seems a little upset.
It's very cumbersome, yes.
First, a landowner to request, that's the hard part, but it is out of our control. So, let me ask you this, and if we can discuss it more, if we need to later, but how does that affect the, doing the first reading of the ordinances? I don't see how we can even do a first and second reading on an ordinance until the annexation's done off of what you've reported.
Can I say something to sort of just go along with what the mayor's saying? One of the very first things that I heard said earlier was, is that the items that were on the agenda tonight were for the purposes of setting a plan of services, and there were some other things, and I don't remember exactly what it was, but the resolutions that I see on the agenda tonight are just simply to set a public hearing, which if I read the resolution correctly, is sometime in September. And that's the only thing that's on the agenda tonight, in terms of the annexation.
Right, I believe the mayor's talking about the item?
E and F.
Right.
Can you do those, can you do those when you haven't even, how do we have any authority to take any action on those two when we haven't even started the process of annexation?
Actually, that's probably a good, a good point, because item 14, in this long list of steps for annexation, you don't commence the ordinance process to zone the territory newly annexed into the corporate limits until we've gone mostly through the process. So.
So unfortunately, realistically, you could put E and F on the same night of the public hearing, maybe? I mean, or do you have to do all 15 other steps before? But it still would be 90 days out, right?
Right, I mean, this, the item was put on at the request of the developer to, as the next step in the process, so.
Okay.
I guess we can look into the specifics of.
Okay, but there's probably not a way to vote on this until we at least get those steps moving forward, correct? Attorney, would you like to, city attorney?
I agree, I think that, that premature to do that.
Okay, so when we get to E and F, the best thing to do would be probably defer it to a later date without a time limit, or whenever the process moves forward for a public hearing. Okay, well, thanks for clearing that up, because it was a little confusing, especially with you giving us the new state regulation. Okay, so, any other staff comments? Okay, that'll be good. We have the approval of the minutes, and it seems everything will be in a consent agenda tonight. Would somebody like to read the items? Would you, Vice Mayor?
Second and final reading of ordinance 2017-13, and ordinance to amend City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Code Title VIII, alcoholic beverages, Chapter Two, Beer, Section Eight, Dash 203, beer board established. Item B, second and final reading of ordinance number 2017-17, and ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee Budget for Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget, General Fund for Safe Routes to School and Transfer from Courts to Public Works. Item C, July 6, 2017, Board of Commissioners Meeting.
Thank you. And that's normally not a practice, but I think somebody mentioned one time they would like everything to be read, so I appreciate you doing that. So, if I can get a motion and approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And I left out any discussion, I hope nobody had any, apologize.
Madam Mayor, I think we skipped number nine, approval of the minutes.
Did we? Well, no, I didn't, because it's, well, it's in the consent agenda, right?
Item C.
Yeah. Hey, I get confused enough myself, so I'm okay. Okay, item 11, we have no old business. Item 12, new business, and it said appoint open seats. And I just want to start off with a little clarification. I had a citizen call and asking if they needed to come tonight, but I clarified with Mr. Collins that this was really appointing the board seats, that there's still an opportunity to take more applications. So if you're a citizen wanting to serve on the board, we have several open seats. So, when we go through the new business, A, is there a need for me to read or have Vice Mayor read the seats? Or is this just for our information? Because it confused me how it's on the agenda.
These are all the seats that are open as of today. We did advertise for these seats, and we do have four applications for the park board, or sorry, yes, park board seats. They're the only, that's the only group that we had any applications for, so you can definitely appoint that one. There were a couple of reappointments, I believe, that were expiring seats, and then obviously the board of commissioners seats on these as well.
Okay, well, when I talked to Mr. Collins today to find out if the citizen had to come, he said no, that we were just doing the board seats. And then also, we, I ran into Mr. Connors on Thursday, and he had not been told about the beer board and being resolved, and it was my understanding we were going to ask those citizens that were serving on those boards first to try to reassign them to a new location, and if that's still the plan, this may need to wait until we get a better plan.
If I may, what I would suggest that we do is just appoint the BOC seats for these respective boards tonight, and then defer the citizen seats until the next meeting. We can continue to take applications for these open seats, and then we can decide on those at the next meeting.
That's fine, I might, would, there's some that could cause us to not have a quorum at some meeting, so you might want to look at some of them.
Which would?
That was mentioned at the last meeting, to get it on here for this one, so.
Right, is the, it, well?
The park board would be one of them.
If that's one of them, then we might want to look at that, yeah.
Well, can we not?
And also the planning commission as well.
Well, could we not, on the park board, current people, we wouldn't have a quorum as it stands with the park board? Because we're still operating, are we already operating off the five?
Yes. This will be the first meeting.
Okay, well, we can defer the meeting on the park board. Planning board commission might be a little more difficult, but I really hate for us to not take those citizens that were serving and try to move them first and see, and the conversation is, how else do you want to, would you serve? And then also with the fact that, you know, off of the direction of Mr. Collins today, I told a gentleman that he didn't have to come. So I would hate to, you know, start filling seats if that's our requirement, and I don't know if we finally got that answer of whether if somebody had to be present.
That resolution was removed, and so we don't have to do that anymore.
Yeah, I was, but is that, Ms. Johnson, is that just for?
It was for anything.
Anything, okay, because I knew we were talking about at the time, if it was request, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. For item 12A, 1D, BOC seat, BOC seat, I nominate Scott Lucas to that seat.
Second.
Okay, so we're doing 1D, and we're skipping? Okay, so we're doing 1D, and we're skipping A through C.
We don't have any, we're on A and B, we don't have any applicants. C, I guess...
Mr. Campbell did want to be reappointed to his seat.
Okay.
And am I reading correctly, they don't expire until 18 and 20?
Those are currently open positions that we're seeking applicants for, that's when they will expire.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If you're asking to be reappointed, you don't have to fill, send in a new application, I'm assuming.
In the past, we've just requested that you let us know. I let them know when their seats are expiring, just send an email and let, ask them to let me know if they're interested in being reappointed.
Okay, any other discussion? Are we just going to fill the 1C, the BOC? Are we going to leave if there's only Ricky? See, I don't, where am I missing? Because I didn't get the applicants in my packet. Now, I see this that you gave us right before the meeting, but I didn't get to look over it. I mean, it was just given to us.
Yes, ma'am, that's why they were requested to be here tonight, so that they could speak to you, and the applicants are here.
Well, the gentleman that I spoke to hasn't, didn't know anything and just saw it in the paper. So did you get ahold of everybody?
Yes, ma'am. Everyone that I received applications for.
Okay.
And Mayor, can we make a motion to just defer the citizen seats until the next meeting? Would that be the simpler thing to do?
There's a...
I think so. But we already have a motion on the table for the board seat. We can move forward with that and make, we could defer the citizen seats. If y'all would like to move on with that, we could.
I'd move to amend the motion to go ahead and reappoint Ricky Campbell. He's expressed interest in being reappointed, and there are no applications for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay.
I will second that, second that amendment.
I do, and I think Ricky's done a great job, and he'll be great to serve. But we're missing, my point is, we sat here in the last meeting, and we said that we were going to give an offer to these people to serve in a different open seat, and we didn't even notify them.
There's still two seats. Mayor, there's still two open seats on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, but I'm just saying, as we go down, it's still the same concept, but we can move forward with this one. Okay, so we have a first and second. Do we get it?
I'm confused. I think we have two motions on the floor, actually.
You have a motion, you have a motion that was made and seconded to appoint Mr. Lucas to the BOC seat, and then there was a motion by Commissioner Burks to amend that motion, adding Mr. Campbell to reappointment to his seat, who's seconded by Ms. Rainey. If there's no objection to that, I would say that the board should call to question and vote on both of those items.
Okay. Okay, and the amended motion, which is allowing Mr. Campbell to stay in his seat for another term, and it was amended motion, so I'm going to do roll call vote. Commissioner Rainey.
Can I ask a question first? Does that motion also include appoint Commissioner Lucas to the board?
Yes.
Okay.
So your motion included both. You're going to wrap him in the amended motion. Okay, we're going to need to say that again, please, whoever. Would you repeat your motion, Commissioner Burks?
I made a motion to amend the original motion to appoint Scott Lucas to the BOC seat to also include reappointing Ricky Campbell to a new three-year term.
Thank you. And then that was seconded by Commissioner Rainey. So roll call vote, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Okay, and Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Okay, Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Okay, and Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Okay, second item is tree board, and we have a citizen seat expiring and a BOC seat. Yes.
Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Debbie Rainey to the BOC seat on the tree board.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, park board. We have a citizen seat expiring June 30, 2020, that is now open, and a BOC for the park board that's open.
Mayor Carroll, I nominate Shannon Crutcher for that seat.
Okay, and get a second?
Second.
Okay, any, I'm sorry, any other nominations? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Planning Commission, we have Brandon Butler's seat expiring 6/30/2017, and Michael Mitchell's seat expiring 6/30/2017.
Madam Mayor, can we back up just a moment? On the park board, there is one open citizen seat, and we do have four applications.
Right.
It wasn't deferred. So I think we have to deal with that before we move on. And also, I believe Mr. Butler is considered resigning his seat as well, which would open up a second position...
Not allowed.
...for a citizen. I know he has a lot on his plate with the Planning Commission, so I can understand that.
I can't understand it, it's not allowed. Okay, well, that ends an interesting point.
And we may need to move his seat to the next meeting since it wasn't technically advertised. Would that be correct? City Attorney?
I'm a little confused. You're talking about, we're talking about the park board seats now.
Correct. There's one open, the seat that would normally expire 6/30/2020, and there's also an open BOC. However, Mr. Butler is the at-large, I believe, on the park board, and he's wanting to resign.
According to my notes, Mr. Butler's no longer on the park commission once we finalize all these memberships and reduce everything to the five members.
Okay.
He was on the park commission as a member of the tree board.
Okay, so his seat would disappear and it's just...
We no longer include a tree board member on the park commission.
Okay. Well, Mr. Butler, you managed to get out of it anyway. Okay.
Okay, so where does that leave us? Mr. Mitchell said he was, have we gotten a letter from Mr. Mitchell? Is he wanting to stay? So he's leaving. Mr. Butler is thinking about leaving us, but you're going to give us time to fill your seat, right?
On the planning commission?
Uh huh.
I did reply to the planning commission.
Oh, you did, okay. Phew. I got the two confused because we were talking, okay.
Mayor, if I may...
Yeah, please, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I think, I think the question right now is, is are we going to defer appointing a citizen to the park board? We have the four applicants, I suppose they're all here tonight. Or are we going to take action on that tonight? That's, that's the issue right now.
Yeah, and I think we should defer, but I don't know. I don't think we did what we said we were going to do, and I think, yeah.
If I may, it was, it was expressed to me that both members of the previous beer board had expressed an interest to continue to serve in some capacity in some other board. The issue is, up until a few minutes ago, we still had a beer board, where they were there. Once we passed the consent agenda that approved the abolishment of the beer board as it previously existed, those two members are now available to serve. So if there was an effort to nominate either one of those two members to serve on any board, it's my understanding they'd be willing to serve on those. So the proper movement at that point would be, if any member would like to appoint either one of those two gentlemen to either one of these boards, simply make the motion. They've already agreed to serve on those in some capacity, so...
Yeah, and I agree, did they, so you did call them this afternoon after we talked?
Right, we did speak, I did not speak to them. They, they have expressed to you a willingness to serve on the board. The question was, do we contact them to let, notify them they're no longer on the beer board? We just about, we just had the second vote on the beer board, which makes them available to serve on any other board. So in that effort, I would simply, if it's your pleasure, privilege to just simply nominate them to serve on one of the other boards.
I get what you're saying, but my thing is, you know, people choose what board they want to serve on, and so they put in their application so, you know, not to give them a chance. And I understand, I mean, how this, I get what you're saying, I do. But I just think that from the last meeting, and then what our conversation was today, you told me it was just the board seats, so even though, because I questioned, you know, what was going on, because I didn't have any applications. So just a little confused on what direction to actually take. I guess if there's no, like we did with Mr. Campbell, it would make sense if there's no other person that applied than we could fill, but I hate to fill those seats for these people that we're rearranging what they've already said that they wanted to serve and just appointing them versus giving them a option.
Madam Mayor, I would suggest, we have two open seats on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have a tree board position that's still open, because we've had no applications, as well as Planning Commission. If they'd like to continue to serve, now that as of tonight, they're no longer on the beer board, then they'll have the opportunity to apply to fill any of those positions. I don't think that should stop us from going forward and filling the open spot on the park board. Because we do have four people who have applied, who I assume are here tonight. Yeah, I've seen a couple of them.
Okay, so we're at the park board. We got the nomination for the Vice Mayor. You want to go ahead and fill the seat for the park board? We have... Who's the applicant for the park board? We got Mark...
Somebody help me out with that.
Sheik. Sheik. And then, is that the only park board?
We got John White, Carol Wilson, Mark Schinkel, and Dennis Chapman.
Okay, now, Dennis Chapman is the one that I said he didn't have to come, because that's how I was directed. I, so I would ask that we still would consider him, even though he is not here and will not have an opportunity to speak.
Mayor, do you want a nomination, or do you want to hear them all speak first?
Typically, we, if they're here, we would allow them to come up and speak and just say why they wanted to serve and what they, any experience they'd like to bring to the table. So we can start off, which I know Mr. Schink is not here, because he also said he was not going to be able to make it. Dennis Chapman is the one that I told he didn't have to come. And Cara Wilson, she's here, and John White's here. So if you, Ms. Wilson, if you would like to come up and just kind of express your desire to serve.
Just wanted to let you know, I heard from somebody that's trying to watch, they've got no sound.
Okay, that's good to know.
Don't know if there's anything you can do about it. Moved to Fairview in 1992, basically to live in a good county, to educate my children, who I ended up mostly homeschooling, but they have attended the public schools, and I do have one that's currently in the high school now. Very familiar with Bowie Park and the history, we've spent countless hours there, and it's one of the things about Fairview that I love most, and it's a place that is full of memories for my children, you know, replanting trees after storms and things like that. I like being involved in the community, I don't like to have a very high profile, so this is a little different for me to get up and stand here and talk to you guys. But I do love the park, and I would love the opportunity to serve the city and look out for the best interests of Bowie Park.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. White?
Hi, I'm John White. Me and my family moved here in 2002. We've gradually become more and more involved in the community, became more involved with the aspects of how the city operated about five years ago, and just feel like now's the kind of the time for me to kind of step it up and kind of volunteer or serve on one of the boards, and I figured the park board would be a good place to start. I've got a daughter who will be in the eighth grade this coming up year. I've had, I've got two older children who lived out here, they're now adults. We, we've volunteered with some of the grace works activities, the turkey trot a couple years ago. We've been to one of the earth, I think the December Earth Day thing out in the park, the Bowie Park, to plant trees. Me and my wife, we're runners. We enjoy the perimeter trail out in the, in the nature park. And we also enjoy the Hidden Park over off 96, which is the Veterans Park, which I see that as having some opportunities that we can probably grow and grow that park and improve the nature park. Some of the perimeter trails are getting a little rough, so there's lots of things. And of course, the Historic Village, too, is something that's kind of cool and upcoming. So I would love to serve the community more and get more involved, and hopefully you'll consider me for the position. Thank you.
Thank you. I love that we have interest. I was, I did get an email from Mr. Schink, and I was going to just maybe just tell you a little bit about him. He did say that he had a desire, he used the park every day for health reasons and exercise, and is willing to get involved and would love the opportunity to just serve. Also, you know, I don't have a lot of information on Dennis Chapman, but I know that a current board member had advised that he was really wanting to serve and had done a lot in the park, so as far as using it and desires and what. So I will, since this was not how I would have wanted it, but I did want to at least speak, Mr. Hendricks gave a recommendation for him. Okay, if I have any nominations?
Mayor?
Yes.
I nominate John White.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and those other potential seats, is there one, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, there was only one opening.
Okay. We will move on to the Planning Commission.
Can I just, can I say one thing before we do? Any of the applicants that, that apply for the park board, we have other openings, as you can probably tell from our discussion, so please apply for some of these other boards. We've got two seats on the Board of Zoning Appeals, one on the tree board, at least the... At least those seats are open right now, so please apply for those seats.
And as far as the Planning Commission, we're just going to still need to take applications? Because I don't see any, right?
Butler wanted to be reappointed, so that's an option tonight. We have two other seats, Mr. Mitchell's seat, and then Matt Beata resigned his seat as well.
Okay, well, we surely need to keep Mr. Butler, so I'd love to vote on that tonight.
Move to reappoint Mr. Butler.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You can't leave? No. He's our chair, so it's not easy to find a chair, and he's just newly appointed and done a great job. So thank you for your service on all those other boards and to all the people that were willing to come out, and please continue when you see these open seats, and please consider other seats, and even for, like example, the park board that had so many applicants, please come to the meetings. There's opportunities for input there, too. So, guess what? We can move on. Okay, item B, ordinance 2017-9.
An ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 47, parcel 66, consisting of 33.81 acres, located off Cumberland Drive from a RS40 low-density residential zoning district to a R20 PUD medium-density residential planned unit development zoning district.
I did want to mention, we did have a citizen's comment about some safety issues, and when we get to each agenda item or we decide, I will tell you. The Planning Commission spent a long time discussing, I mean, an hour on this, and discussing whether or not it met the codes and they did all the requirements. And then also, the Planning Commission requested more. They had some, you know, safety concerns that were brought up, the same ones that Ms. Brooks brought up, and so one of the things the developer had agreed to do is to, there will be a gap in the sidewalks when, there's already going to be a gap from the safe routes to school to the already approved Cumberland Estates. So there would be additional gap. The builder has agreed that they will work with the city to close in the six lots and close that gap. Now, does it change that there's a lot of traffic? That's probably, you know, another discussion. But I was really proud of the Planning Commission, because here's the fact, is the Planning Commission's job is to approve whether or not a subdivision meets our codes. It is the Board of Commissioners' job to do the rezoning. So the Planning Commission, with our deliberation, went through all the engineers' recommendations, tried to come up with whether or not it was, you know, met it, and then they did make a recommendation. We, it never became, what about the rezoning? That wasn't the conversation. The conversation will be rezoning is for the Board of Commissioners. The Planning Commission does not have the ability to rezone any property. So they can make recommendations, they can try to make sure everything's right, and I do believe the Planning Commission, even though it's a very new Planning Commission, did a good job discussing and asking questions. Okay, do we have any other topics, or anybody want to present anything? Do you have anything? Nope. Okay, if I can get a motion?
The developer here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. I'm Jamie Reed with SCC. I'm one of the surveyors and the engineers working on the project.
Can we put what we're actually talking about up on the, is it possible?
One moment, we'll make sure we have that.
We'll put it on hold while we get a visual. I know you've done it before, but if you want to just give a brief description on what this development is?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. This is a, next to, like you stated earlier, this is next to Cumberland Estates subdivision, just to the south of it. We've got two cul-de-sacs leading into here, approximately 68 lots with almost 30% open space. We've done traffic shed analysis, and it's come back and indicated that we need two 10-foot lanes along the road, both roadways, but we're adding, in this stipulation with the Planning Commission, we're also adding curb and gutter along the roadway and sidewalks through there in addition to, like the mayor said, breach that gap between the school sidewalks, between this development and the next. The housing on this will be very similar to the Cumberland Estates. We tried to follow, you know, kind of the rules that was imposed on it from the initial rezoning, and be glad to answer any other questions if you have any for me. There's walking trails, tot lots, gazebos, multipurpose fields. It's step system, it's tying on to the Cumberland step system. I've already got that, you know, approved through the state as far as tying on to it. Once this is a plan, if approved, then I'll send it for stamp approved plans to the state. They've already evaluated the soils to tie on to Cumberland Estates, so.
Did you say to tie into the step system with Cumberland Estates?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All we're doing there is making one of the sand filters a little bit larger, which is the recirculate sand filter that treats the waste. There's two of them on Cumberland Estates, so the next one will be enlarged just a little bit to get these 68 lots. And then in turn, we've added a couple of acres of soils to increase their capacity over there for drip dispersal.
I noticed it says 68 lots, and that's what's on the plan here, and it's what it was when it came through the Planning Commission, but I'm looking at the letter that was submitted from Dixon Water Authority, and this may have just been a mistake on their part, and I know that's not what was before the board tonight, but it's saying that the development will consist of plus or minus 157 single-family residential lots. Is there something else? Or is that just a mistake?
No, no, that's a typo. I'm actually meeting with them in the morning at 8:00 to review this, to get sent to the state. Yeah, that's a typo. I don't know where the 157.
Dixon Water Authority, okay, tying any two systems together?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They would rather have them tied together, because if not, you'd have two permits that they'd have to monitor, and it's better just to have one to keep an eye on versus two and sending in two things, you know, two or three times a year for testing samples and Plus, you have to pay for those permits every year and renew them. It's better just to have one.
It doesn't mention in the letter from the Water Authority that you're tying in. Should it have?
Well, I don't know if it's, the letter should have we are. I mean, this is part of the Cumberland Estates, the step system is, and actually, I'm meeting with them tomorrow with the state operating permit to actually send to the state, so we are tying into these systems.
And they've approved that?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, they've agreed to, that's why I'm meeting them in the morning to go over the fine tuning of the permit before we send it. They have to actually sign the permit. And they were waiting on, what was taking so long is the soils had to be approved by TDEC on site, so they've approved those soils a couple of weeks ago now. I'm meeting with them tomorrow morning at 8:00 to send the state operating permit. You can't send that until you get the soils approved and the state approves the soils.
So this letter of approval from the Water Authority was March 17th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? We got the development app.
Mayor, I do, just quickly, because I'm looking at this, and I was referencing the Planning Commission notes, because I wanted to make sure that I wasn't just overlooking something there, but on this drawing, Peterborough Lane, it looks like it just dead ends. What is, where's that going? I don't have a...
It'll go to that Camilla McDonald property, parcel 64. It's a larger track, track of land to the south. Yes, sir. And we also, like the mayor, the cul-de-sac is a temporary cul-de-sac at the very end to be extended to that adjacent track also. We with the fire department agreed to pave it, put curb and gutter up until some point whenever it does extend, but as long as they have turnaround access and capabilities to turn around trucks and stuff.
Do you have intentions on extending it eventually?
If somebody buys that adjacent property, they will have that ability to tie into that stuff, and I would think planning would want them to utilize that to have more ins and outs for subdivisions.
And the house, and I know we spent some time, but I really can't see, and I just need to refresh her. The home?
Yes, ma'am.
That's in the middle, the sidewalk will go completely connecting, yeah.
In front of it. Yes, ma'am.
So it'll go, you could be able to walk from the middle school?
From Cumberland.
All the way to, yeah.
Through Cumberland, through the other side of Cumberland. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And we did turn in the deeds at the workshop, and we talked about that, about the adjacent three tracks. One track goes to the center line of the road, so we're just, we're going to work through those with the city acquiring that right away.
Okay.
To get the sidewalk built. All the other ones go to the margins, so there's always one, so one of the three deeds to the center line of the road, so.
Yeah.
You may or may not be able to answer this question, but when they do a traffic study, do they take into consideration that there's also this proposed subdivision that's next to this, that's got over 200 and some odd homes?
Yes, sir. It's the same girl that did it, Gillian Fishbuck. She did both of those, so she knew exactly what was proposed, and that's what, and that's one of the main reasons Will, the city engineer, requested that we do this traffic shed, is to include both of those tied in together. And that's why we're doing, you know, upgrading the road, curb and gutter all the way down through there, and adding the sidewalks and stuff. But yes, to answer your question, yes, sir.
Mr. Reed, I'm also on the Planning Commission, but I was not selected for the last meeting.
You're lucky. It was long.
I did watch the YouTube, so I didn't get away. There was some requests that the Planning Commission made, such as an efficient top line and a little more...
Those are added.
...purpose field. Does it show on the...
No, no, sir. It showed on the ones I brought Tuesday. I think per the Planning Commission's approval the other night, I think they wanted to show the older one, but I've already turned it in Tuesday at a workshop. They revised showing the multipurpose fields and stuff with the additional stuff on it, and the comments addressed from Planning Commission from the last time. Is that right? Is that my correct, Mayor? That's the way it was...
I believe so.
I don't believe those were included in our packet, because the packet, to my knowledge...
We were asked to not present those tonight. We were asked to have the Board of Commissioners look at exactly what the Planning Commission approved, so that there would be no confusion.
Well, but that's not helpful to us, because whatever we approve tonight, I mean, if there's some additions that are being made that have been submitted by the developer, whatever we approve tonight is what we're stuck with, is I understand it. So we would need to, I want to know what we're approving.
If we could get Mr. Owens to come up and maybe help explain, because I know it was his suggestion that what went before the Planning Commission is what come before us.
Just some background on this, that procedurally, what was discussed at the Planning Commission was based on past histories of revisions being made between what the Planning Commission saw and the first thing that the Board of Commissioners saw, and some of those revisions being made, some of them not, some of those revisions actually causing changes to other areas of the plan that the Planning Commission didn't see. Staff and the Planning Commission thought it was best to move forward with the exact plan that the Planning Commission saw, provide a copy of those review comments that, excuse me, the motion and the contingencies of that motion that the Planning Commission made, so that you have the original plan that the Planning Commission saw and reviewed, the contingencies for approval that they made a part of their motion, and then if you desired to move forward with agreeing with those contingencies, or if you wanted to see even additional changes or request additional changes of the developer, that that could take place at this meeting, and either required you, either you could require those changes to be seen before your first reading, or since this is a first reading, go ahead and incorporate not only the Planning Commission's changes, but any changes that you discussed in addition to the Planning Commission's, have the applicant make those changes between first and second reading, and then move forward from that point. So the idea was to try not to alter or deviate from exactly what the Planning Commission saw, so that you're not guessing as to whether or not, did those changes, were they made? If they were made, did they meet, you know, what the Planning Commission wanted to see? And did it change anything else? So we don't have to spend a lot of time, or you don't have to spend a lot of time trying to figure out what was changed, how it was changed, and did it affect anything else on the property that wasn't discussed in the Planning Commission? Another part to that is, the applicant can, any applicant, not just this applicant, but if there is a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission, the applicant may or may not agree to those conditions, and they have that right. They may agree to some of them, but not all of them, and so they may want to present to you at their first reading, which we're here tonight, they may want to present and say, yeah, we agree to items 1, 2, 5, and 7, just as an example, but we don't agree to items, the remainder of the items. And so that would need to be hashed out here, and so that prevents the developer from going in and making tweaks that may or may not even be required, or incorporating additional things that might affect what the Planning Commission said.
But to my point, when it comes to a PUD, and maybe I've just misunderstood this whole time, but I've been told this over and over and over by various members of the administration here, that if we, whatever we approve, when it comes to a PUD, is what's approved.
Correct.
There's not going to be, and there may be some, something that the Planning Commission can do in terms of design or something along those lines, but whatever we approve tonight is what is approved, and at that point, there would be no changes to that.
Well, with this just being first reading, and you still having to set up a public hearing and second reading, then...
Well, I get that part. I know it's not final tonight, there's a second read, I understand that, but ultimately, whatever we approve...
Yes, correct.
Is it?
Correct.
And if we ask for changes that are not part of that approval, or that are not contingent upon that approval, then those changes, they're not binding.
If I understand you correctly, that's accurate.
Okay.
Yeah. So for instance, if you agreed with everything the Planning Commission said and wanted to see those changes, then I would suggest to you that your action tonight would be a motion to approve first reading contingent upon those changes being made, and those changes being made before it comes back before you for second reading. If you get to second reading and you're not satisfied with those changes, at that point, you can suggest, this isn't, this still isn't what we wanted to see, whether it's open space or sidewalks or whatever, so take another swing at it. So that's where I think the intention was trying to go.
Well, and the reason I ask this, because I'm looking at the Planning Commission recommendations, and I don't see any of that stuff that Commissioner Burke's brought up.
Correct. And that is not, the applicant has provided exactly what was requested of them. That is not anything reflective of their lack of effort or willingness to comply with those items. those items.
So, if we were to go to approve it with the changes that were proposed by the Planning Commission, then before the second reading, we would get new documentation, show those updates?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. I, along with, I suspect everyone at the table, would, would not, would not recommend to you to have a second, second reading and approval without having the final documents in front of you.
Will, I know, maybe you can just clarify, I've seen us citizens concerned about the septic system, and have concerns about that, and we've kinda gone, gone over it a lot over the last couple of years, but the concern is who's responsible when the septic system breaks down, and of course, it is Dixon Water, but would you just take one little second and, you know, explain that, just to ease minds of any concerns?
For a system such as this, as proposed, along with what Cumberland Estates is on, the state requires those types of systems to be operated, maintained, and owned by a licensed utility. In this case, it's Water Authority of Dixon County. At no time can the Water Authority convey that to, for instance, the homeowners association, or any non-licensed utility can never own or operate or maintain that. The state will issue a permit, as Mr. Reed indicated, they will issue a permit to the Water Authority that outlines the operation of this system, and what the mandatory requirements are as far as testing, sampling, submitting reports, inspection, and all that. They are, are bound by that permit to keep the system operational. At no time can they discharge untreated effluent, just run it on the ground, or anything like that. There is, there are very tight controls from the state, and the state being the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, that, that are in place for these systems, not just in Fairview, but across the entire state.
Okay, thank you. And then also Dixon Water oversees it the whole time, so if there was something that was not being done correctly, they would have input, correct? They have to approve the plan?
Correct. The, the Water Authority would approve the construction plans for the system. They would be involved in inspection of the installation of that system, because their, their license, their relationship and reputation with TDEC is on the line, so they wanna make sure that that system is installed in a manner that they can meet those operating permit requirements. So yes, they, they will certainly inspect the installation and construction of the system.
Thank you. I'm sorry to go back, but you know, anytime that anybody comes...
Mayor, also, to, to add to that, also, the engineer and TDEC has to certify that system before it's turned on. Not only does Dixon Water Authority, I have to certify it, then Dixon certifies it, then TDEC certifies it from a field inspection certification. So it's, you got three different independent, you know, separate people that certify it also.
Thank you. Thanks for adding that.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
How long have these systems been in use, and, and what's the, what's the history?
I've been doing them for over 20 years. CUD out of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, it's probably got, I don't know, 5,000 or 6,000, 7,000 lots online right now. Probably one of the largest ones in the state of Tennessee, as far as a, as a utility company overseeing them. But I do them all over the state, from, from Memphis over to Knoxville, middle Tennessee area and stuff. They're very, very popular, because, as you know, the Clean Water Act, back in the 70s, they don't want us to discharge in the rivers anymore. We have to clean the, the loads that is being discharged from these large municipal plants, and this is considered a going green type technology. You're dispersing it in the same watershed into the soils. It's treated effluent, it's thrown in the soils. It's not like a septic system, raw sewage. It's treated effluent that goes back into the same place that it's coming from, back into the soils. So you have pretty green grass throughout, all that open space in, within these communities.
And the failure rate, is there, has there been failures with these systems?
Well, I, as far as failures, you know, there's probably been some bad operators in the past, like a single person that's operating one out of, you know, a small area or something for a church or something like that, that may get a bad discharge, and they'll make them clean up, 'cause you get these, like Will said, you'll get a permit, and you'll have to follow that permit on your samplings and stuff like that. If, if your samples aren't producing what it's supposed to be, just like with a, with a huge wastewater treatment plant, you know, they have a lot of, you know, some violations when it rains and certain things like that, same there. So they'll put a, they'll, they'll give them a slap on the wrist and make them clean up that act. But as far as, you know, like CUD, Dixon Water Authority, they're some of the best around, as far as the records of violations or anything like that. And there's none to know of, none that I know of ever for Dixon Water Authority, or CUD, or anywhere like that.
Thank you.
Unless Will knows of some that I don't know of, and I, I do a ton of them throughout the state, I'm probably, do more, I'm probably one of the three that does the most in the state of Tennessee as far as step system.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rainey, when we originally started having these conversations a couple of years ago, I did contact Williamson County, 'cause they do have some, and talked to a representative with the county, and what I learned in the very beginning, the only problems that they ever had was with the first one, and they fixed all that with policies. And Dixon Water actually got, they used Williamson County's policy and procedure as a guide. So, not to say there's probably somebody out there that could say, yes, there might be something, but it's, was in the installation. So, from what I was told in the beginning, that those, that was the only issue that Williamson County... Now, we did tour Rutherford County, and Will and the city manager at the time, you know, went through and saw the system, and talked to, they did a great job, really, of touring us around, and taught, having representatives and stuff like that, so just to kinda share that knowledge. Okay, any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
What issues do I still have? This is considered cul-de-sac. What is the point here? This is a cul-de-sac right in here. This is a cul-de-sac. Currently, our regulations allow 24 homes to be on cul-de-sac. I'm assuming the reason being is, if you have some issue, say, you have a fire here, all these people through here are then blocked off from access or exit from their homes to get out of the subdivision. Anywhere through here, start blocking off quite a few people. That's still a concern I have. Speaking with the fire department, they said if there's a fire, you can have a truck blocking that road for up to six hours. God forbid that happened, but it does happen, and that's a concern that I have. I know they would turn it out here to help with what they thought the regulations were, but even adding this larger turnaround here for emergency vehicles to be able to turn around, it still doesn't fix that issue.
Yes, Mr. Reed.
We, we, to answer your question, we looked at that, and we beat that, seemed like numerous times. The, you know, like you were saying, the intent is for somebody to come in there and turn around, or fire trucks and stuff like that. That's why we, the two, stub streets at the very end are designed to tie into adjacent tracks for the emergency vehicles, whoever, to be able to escape out of there. The other alternative was to extend that little cul-de-sac down there just to the south, up, and tie it to that adjacent, to the subdivision up there, but, I mean, that, that'll get your intent, but you got a road, and the city's gonna maintain a long road with no lots on it, just to get a, a truck to turn around, and all they would do is make a little loop through there, and you're still gonna be at the dead end of that cul-de-sac. And you got that little cul-de-sac there that you can turn around now.
Mr. Reed, I, I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying, so I apologize. I'm not talking about the fire truck being able to turn around.
No, I, I, you're talking about...
These people being able to leave.
I agree. I agree.
While the fire truck's sitting there for six hours, blocking that road.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We can extend that cul-de-sac straight up there and tie it to that road, so those people in the back can get out. Who's to say that, you know, that development to the, to the east there, we develop it, and that road stands out and ties to another road, they can get out that route. That was our, our thinking, our attention. We, that's why we did two outs, and we provided a paved temporary turnaround for the fire trucks to turn around, and they were okay with that. But, and I get your point, and I can, like I said, I could stub that cul-de-sac straight up there and tie it to that street, then you can have lots, you know, loaded on one side, that's gonna go up there that we're maintaining, that, that's really not gonna gain, gain that much. You'll get some traffic and temporarily come out that way, but, you know, I'm gonna extend, I don't know, 600, 700 foot of road that's gonna tie up there, just, just to the east of that little cul-de-sac up there. And then, you know, then, I don't know, then it takes away the walking trail, the tot lots, some of the, you know, the green space we was talking about trying to keep, just to get that road in there. So we, we felt that, that, you know, that providing that paved turnaround at the very end, and stubbing two streets, and then having a turnaround cul-de-sac like that in the middle...
I understand you're stubbing this out, hopefully...
At some point in time, yeah.
But right now, it's not.
Oh, I agree. I agree. There's two stubs for future expansion.
It's still stuck. Having a turnaround is, I'm sure the fire department really appreciates that, instead of having to try to back a vehicle out.
Yeah.
But again, doesn't solve the issue. And again, that's a concern that I still have.
I mean, if, if, if that's such a, I mean, a, a, a big ordeal for y'all, and y'all have an issue, I mean, I can, like I said, I can extend that cul-de-sac from that lower end all the way up there to meet that, but it's kinda, I don't know. And I can move that cul-de-sac down a little bit, it's, it's, if your wish is, if, if that's what you wish...
How far over could you move that road to?
I mean, I could run it all the way up there, and tie it to that northern road.
I mean, I'm sure you could go straight up.
I mean, you know, I don't, I don't wanna go by that house. What my goal was, is that, you know, that's, that's a massive house. I don't know if you've been through there. It's a huge house. So we tried to create that five acres around it, separate the two cul-de-sacs, and then kinda put some, like, walking trails, parks, and stuff like that in the back with detention ponds. That's what we felt would, you know, look better out there than having that road go behind it and tie up there. I mean, that's my thought, just for, you know, temporary turnaround for, you know, somebody to spend a few hours to wait on that traffic versus...
Right now, it, also, it doesn't feel like a subdivision. It feels like three subdivisions, like you have one here, this nice big spot...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very nice house. And then you have the separate one here. It just seems kinda odd that way.
Yeah, it's a, you're kinda stuck with that massive mansion in the middle. I don't, how it's, you know, I just, cul-de-sac on the bottom, and the soils were where they're at, so, you know, the soils dictate kinda where you don't put the, the land, and then we did the big lots up front, on that other side, extra Cumberland, like they did. But, that's kind of our thinking, that's what we beat around the other night, too.
I now heard some discussion about being able to tie it on up to Cumberland Estates in the top office.
Well, the, all that step system, now, we, that, you know, if we'd had way back when, when that was going on, we would've had the hindsight, we would've stubbed a street over there, but, you know, that's actually where all the soils and the drip systems are, in between the two properties. The only other two large tracks to tie anything into, to the rear, are those two we tied into. There's already an existing subdivision in the back, is where I wished we could've looped through, but, you know, there was no stubs to it.
I heard you say earlier that there was roughly nine acres of open space? Is that right?
Yes, sir. Nine and a half acres, roughly almost 30% open space.
But of that nine and a half acres and, and 30%, six of that is the step system area?
No, two, two acres, roughly, a couple acres is the step system, and that's not in, that's not included, nor is the five acre track as far as the open space. This, this is just the open space showing the multipurpose fields, detention ponds, gazebo's and stuff like that, not, not the, not the step system.
Apparently, our packet has a different version than that one, I apologize, but I can see, I can see it now, up on the screen.
Yes, sir. That's the, the step system lot up there on top, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This subdivision will have an HOA, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And that HOA will be responsible for maintaining the walking trails?
Yeah, and there'll be a third party, typically what we do, they do a third party association that does those HOAs, yes, and it'll have to maintain the gazebo's, walking trails, you know, the mowing, all around, all that open space and stuff.
Including the multi-use athletic fields?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And I stand corrected, that actually isn't our packet. I was looking at a different version under a, I guess, a, another packet that was submitted at some point in the past, that has the pictures and all...
Yes, sir.
With it, so there is another version there.
And another reason we didn't try to, that road up there to tie into that, there's a lot of trees, if you look on aerial of that, there's a lot of big trees that separate those two, that we tried to stay away from, too. That's why we, I mean, I can run that road closer to it, but then you're gonna get into all that, tearing trees down between the two, and I'd like to keep that natural buffer the best we could, that's what I, you know...
How many homes right here? Is it 48 through here? Is that right?
It's somewhere, I think you're close, yeah. Including the cul-de-sac, yeah. I think it's around 48. Somewhere like 47, 48, 'cause 129's not a lot. We removed it by creating a cul, that stub street.
48 or 49 if you include 102.
Yeah.
Did you have, go ahead, Commissioner?
If, Commissioner Burke's, correct me, help me understand this, you said something about regulations stating no more than 24 homes in a cul-de-sac, and apparently you had a question about if we were over that, so help me, help me understand that.
We are over it. Our current city regulations only allow you to have 24 homes on a cul-de-sac. So if... So they're asking for a variance...
Okay.
As part of the PUD, which is itself a variance to get outside of that.
But the fire chief was at the meeting?
And he was at the workshop, and we worked through that again Tuesday, so he was, they were, they were good as far as we paving everything, they don't want us to leave the gravel ends and stuff where they can turn around. As long as they can get around and turn around, and there's cul-de-sacks separating those, like that little stub street up to the north, and then the very end, if they go to the very end, they've got something to turn around and do their trucks and get out of there.
And I understand that, Mr. Reed, I, I, that's a whole separate issue.
Yeah, I agree.
But I did want Commissioner Locust to understand that that was something that was asked at the Planning Commission also.
I got a couple more, more things, if you don't mind. I know we've hit you with a lot, but the, out of all of the 68 homes, the, the five that are on Cumberland Drive will be all masonry products?
Yes, sir.
And then the, the ones that are internal will be front masonry products and three sides?
And, and, well, on, on, as corner lots, both fronts will be, that was a thing me and you talked about, the mayor, the, the corner lots will be both fronts, any front will be all, all brick, or masonry product.
Okay. And the other thing, I know, I know when you guys put these packets together to, to present it to, to boards such as us, you, you probably use stock images, but I see the same gazebo and same tot lot in about every packet that comes through here, and that's fine.
And, 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 yeah, if, and that's what I said at the last minute, if we've got some other suggestions, other, I mean, this is very, gonna be very similar to the Cumberland Estates, so...
Okay. Here's, here's my question, here's my concern, and I know it's not as large of a subdivision as Cumberland Estates, but as, with it being a PUD, you have to, to establish and set up this, this homeowners association. It has been my experience that when you have no more amenities other than that, that a homeowner associate, homeowners association is responsible for maintaining, eventually that homeowners association dissolves. There's nothing for, there's no reason for their existence, and then that, that creates problems, or it has, in the past for us at least. And I, again, I realize that it's not nearly the size subdivision as the one on, that's Cumberland... And I, again, I realize that it's not nearly the size subdivision as the one on, that's Cumberland Estates. We're only talking about sixty-eight homes, but the discussion that, and I sort of touched on this earlier, the discussion that apparently was had at the planning commission, I don't, I will, I'm not privy to what that was, but was that there would be other amenities other than this tot lot and other than this gazebo. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir. And we've, on the new plan, we show multipurpose fields and stuff. That was a thing they wanted to have on multipurpose fields. And we've added those on there also.
I believe an additional tot lot in another location as well.
Yeah, it might've been. I, it was a long night.
Yeah. The discussion was actually about soccer fields or multipurpose at the community.
Yeah, they wanted to see something. Yes, sir.
Now, the only thing with the homeowners association, it was brought up that you could, um, run into as far as public use, but I mean, I guess we could, um.
That's kinda hard. We, we usually do a third party. A lot of the ones do a third party homeowners association deal where they keep up, but.
But there was conversation about how our community struggles for places to play and practice.
I know one of the concerns the community has is the number of houses on this road. Right now in the mornings, trying to get out of the Cumberland at one hundred and Crowe Cut is difficult. When you add school traffic in, it's extremely difficult. I've had to go through there many times and sit there and wait and wait and wait as people are trying to get in and out. And that's as it is now. With Cumberland Estates coming in, that's two hundred and sixty odd homes, two hundred and eighty?
Remember, it was somewhere in two hundred and fifty or two thirty-two, somewhere, somewhere in there, two hundred something.
Then we're adding in another seventy, is it seventy-eight or sixty-eight?
Fifty-eight.
There's already been another subdivision approved across the street, I believe, right here, isn't there?
It hasn't been. It's a preliminary and it's twelve, I think, homes. And it's acre to lots.
But we're gonna begin building on that. I think McCormick Grove has another phase or two left that they can do. We're looking at really building up this one area pretty quick, um, right together. And the concern is what is that gonna do to the traffic there? And I know we have a traffic study. But just from a practical point of view, from having experienced it myself for years, I think it's gonna be difficult adding in this volume on top of the volume that's already been approved under Cumberland Estates. That's a concern that I share.
Are, aren't they doing something, isn't something proposed at that intersection? That I, I read, I thought, did I read something that the intersection was getting improvements?
Well, the, um, sitting manager is working, um,
And I think that's.
Possibilities and we know it's obviously, especially after the.
I thought he had, uh, didn't he, when, I, I, I thought that was a a project or was it not in the works or that infrastructure improvements out there?
I think it's a project we, everybody in this town would like to see.
Oh, okay. I thought.
Whether, how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Can we get the approvals and what the timeframe is to do that?
He's gonna pay for it.
Well, I, there was, I think what you probably have read or heard is there was potential grant money and they were gonna look into some grants possibly. But, I mean, we'd have to get approved for that process. It's, you know, not just, we wish it was a done deal. But do you have anything to add, Mr. Collins? Did we get it right?
No, ma'am. That's substantially correct. Yes.
Okay.
Comes down to wishes were horses, beggars would ride, um, at this point.
Yeah, we, you know, the, the traffic report that Gillian did, which she, basically on another one too, it's, it suggested that that road just be upgraded to, to handle that amount of traffic, you know, and of course we're adding curb and gutter and the, and that additional and the sidewalks all through there from the school all the way over. So.
I'm sure everybody at Los Alamos Road would love to have it upgraded, but again.
So you're got.
Money come from.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but so you guys are, I wanna make sure that I understand the conclusions and recommendations of this traffic study are what you guys are willing to do. You're saying you're not only just in front of the subdivision, you're going to widen the roads so that it's at least ten-foot travel lane in each direction all the way from there to the school plus add curb and gutter?
No, just in front of our site. We're adding sidewalk with the city's help. We're going those three other tracks to tie to the schools in, into their sidewalk deal.
What do you mean with the city's help?
Well, there's, there's a, there's, there's three tracks of land through there. One track is to the, their deed shows to the center line of the road. I need help from the city acquiring that, uh, going through there. We, we as the developer, we can't go through there. Only the city can go through there and take that property. And there's one of the three. We're, like I said, we're totally fine with, with running that sidewalk. We just need to help with that. And we mentioned that in the workshop again Tuesday and, and, and stuff. So we know kind of the avenues we gotta go to get the steps to get that, so.
Well, and their funding, um, we would have to, they can't annex, you know, um, but they, they would help fund and complete the project. It's just because, um, they don't have the ability, um.
Yeah, we're, we're running.
Because that one is in the center.
Yeah, we're running into that problem in Williamson County all over where there's, where the, the city or the county ask us to do road improvements uh, to certain areas. Well, Buchanan, if it's to the center line of the road, they own, is it, you know, they actually own basically the edge of the pavement or the edge of the ditch line. Well, when we upsize it, we, we can't go through there with that sidewalk on somebody's property. So we just need help with the city getting that, cause we can't go in and get those.
We'd only need our help to condemn it.
Yes, sir. That's right. No, we're gonna build it. Yeah, we'll.
You could go purchase that right away.
Yeah, if we had, if whatever has to be, yeah, whatever has to be, you know, kinda going through there to get that sidewalk there. And that's, but we only can do that with the city's help. You know what I mean?
If we have to condemn it.
Correct.
You could purchase it yourself.
Yeah, yeah, if they accept, but if not, the city would.
Inquired yet to see if they're willing to?
No, no, we're, we're actually, we just pulled the deeds this week. We're currently surveying those three tracks right now. But as of, I think a week ago, we were just told and we agreed to do that. So we pulled the deeds, sent it to the city. There was one of the three deeds, as usual, right in the middle of them, uh, with the deeds calling to the center line of the road. So, that's kinda where that's at. But we kinda got a game plan Tuesday at the workshop to proceed with it. That's why we're doing the survey, figuring out where everything's at. Then, then we're gonna approach those, that property owner about acquiring that and placing the sidewalk. And if they say no, then that's when we're gonna come back to the city and say, hey, we need a little help.
I know you don't know exact cost, but can you give me an estimate for the size now that you know what it would cost you in addition to do that?
You mean the sidewalk?
Sidewalks.
I have no, I.
Okay.
I have no idea until we kinda get a, at all survey, then once I have that number, I'll have it for the next meeting. I'll be able to take exactly the linear footage from all three tracks.
Okay.
Who, who is going to, i- is the, the athletic fields or the multipurpose fields or whatever you referred to earlier? Is that gonna, who is that gonna belong to? Is it gonna belong to the homeowners?
The homeowners association of that development. Yes, sir.
I didn't know if that was something that was gonna be dated to the city, but it's gonna belong to the homeowners association.
Yeah, and, and we may, you know, I'm not, I'm kinda speaking ahead, but they may try to, the developers kind of working in conjunction, the, the two tracks, the two Cumberland and this, they may end up combining it to making it one big. So they got multipurpose fields that, that all of them can share and tot lots in the whole, both areas, which would be good, cause you got a sidewalk that walks right through it and walking trails throughout both of them, so.
Cause one of the things that we've talked about in the past, and I mentioned a little bit earlier about the homeowners association potentially dissolving. What happens is, is, and, and there was another proposal not too long ago that came through that wasn't quite this large, but had about forty homes in it, I believe, if I recall correctly, thirty-eight to forty. And we talked about some of these same things in that particular, uh, proposed development. But one of the things that we kept coming back to was, is that we have these proposals where all these interior homes are gonna be three sides, something other than masonry, more than likely vinyl, I'll assume. Um, you know, you stop, you, you have people that will stop taking care of their homes eventually if there's not some enforcement by the homeowners association to require them to pressure wash or do whatever it is. And you just stop having maintenance, routine maintenance done to these homes. In that particular subdivision, if I recall, we made, we said that it was gonna be four sides masonry product. That was, like, again, not quite this size, but similar. And I realize that's not the same as the, as the Cumberland Estates. But the Cumberland Estates was approved by a different board of commissioners, uh, so understand that. And the direction that I'm interested going in is, is getting away from these three side vinyl. And I realize there may be a market for that and I've heard all that argument. But if you drive down Interstate forty, one of the most obnoxious things that I think you could ever see and look at is this subdivision to the right that is exactly what you're proposing here, basically brick front with three sides vinyl. And it's all, I call it the vinyl village. I mean, that's what it looks like. That are all just piled on top of one another. Now, I realize that this is a little less dense than probably what that subdivision is and even the subdivision next door to it. But one of the things we're running into is we, we're, we're having these, these proposed PUDs come and, and now we're having them, uh, adjacent to one another. And it seems that in the past, there was some, I don't know if it was legislation of the city or just a, um, a rule under, uh, the sub regs or the zoning ordinance or where it was. But at some point in the past, there was concern about having this dense of zoning next to each other. And in fact, I think there was some geographical limitation in the past on, you know, how close you could put these type developments. One of the things that we're working on as a city is trying to revamp some of those documents I just talked about to try to address these issues. So it's really difficult for me, based on all of those concerns, um, if, if you guys were not willing to do some of those other things. And I know we hadn't talked about it. In other words, four sides masonry product, some of those things. And I feel like that because you're asking for a PUD designation, we have the authority and the ability to ask you to do those things.
Yes, sir.
Um, cause you're asking for a variance from the city. I don't know if that becomes cost prohibitive for you or not, um, to, to continue with this development. But that's something that I would like to see for all of the reasons I just went through. Uh, you know, I, I feel like we're having these, these developments pop up all around town and, you know, it's, it's more of the same and similar. And some of them are, are not very aesthetically pleasing. And it's happening very quickly in Fairview. And if we don't try to do something to get a little closer to what we actually envision, uh, for the city in terms of building materials and otherwise and these PUDs or other, or other developments, then I feel like it's gonna get away from us. And again, I don't know, I'm not the developer. I don't know your nu- you guys' numbers on this.
I'm not, I'm just engineering, but what I do here is there, it, when you do all those sides, it throws it into another bracket. They're trying to make affordable homes here for, you know, everybody. And it just throws it up there. I'm not opposed to brick. I, I mean, I, I, that's something I'm gonna just have to talk with a developer about. And, and I would like it not to just say brick. Like you said, if we could.
Masonry.
Masonry product all four sides, something like that, so that you could change it up with different type of, uh, product. But if that's the drether's of the, you know, the board, which route you'd like to go.
I would just like to make the comment that this would be more like a Cox Run subdivision. They are, um, they're not RS fifteen where they're right on top of each other. It is a, um, RS twenty. And I know, uh, we've all had the conversation about much rather see quality than quantity. Um, much rather see a builder or a developer come in and provide us a quality product.
Mayor.
Yes.
May I muddy the water just a touch?
Mm-hmm. Why not?
That, that may help offset, just doing some quick math, and I'm not looking at part of the issue as it relates to the stub street and the number of homes that we have. If you, if you look at the cul-de-sac as you pull into the neighborhood, cul-de-sac is to your left. If you proceed forward, there appears to be twenty-seven homes from the first cul-de-sac to the end of the street. As I get it, if you begin with lot number one forty and lot number one thirteen, if you include lot, lot number one thirteen, I believe you have twenty-eight homes. The future, looking into this, just having seen some of this, I don't know the owner of the, of the vacant property where the, the eight-one-one symbol is. But looking into this from a future standpoint, my guess would be if that property was developed and there was an effort to attach that property to the sub-street, most of the homeowners in that phase of the subdivision are gonna be in this room being, speaking against the traffic from that proposed development going through their neighborhood. So my question to preserve some of that or offset some of that, and again, I don't, I don't have some of the paperwork, but I guess my question or solution similar to that would be if we could eliminate the stub street and beginning with lot number one forty, move those lots one lot closer to where we are. In other words, we would move lot number one thirty to where the stub street is. And then one thirty-one would be where one thirty, one thirty on, and so on, so that lot number one forty is vacant. If lot number one forty becomes vacant, then that could be used as a parking area, some other location that would serve two purposes. The first would be you actually could park there, ride a bike, do some other thing to get to the tot lot, which would offer you some ability to use that. And then in the event there was some blockage of the street, that gives you the cul-de-sac and an alternate location that you could use to route traffic if you needed to get there. In that instance, you would have the second cul-de-sac with twenty-eight homes in the in, interior or coming closer to Cumberland would be served by those. Just looking at this, it looks like that, that may work and offset that. So you limit the future concern of the traffic going through the neighborhood and provide some relief near the cul-de-sac in the event there was a road blockage or other traffic that needed to be considered.
See, Mr. Collins, Mr. Reed, that they could just run a road. If they did that, took out forty through here, then you do, well, you take away the issues, no longer a cul-de-sac. And you do provide some relief if there's something here, these people can still get out. It's not the best solution, but it's a better solution than as is now.
E- e- even if there wasn't a road, i- if there was enough road that you could get someone through in the event of fire or, or events gonna be longer than, than six or eight hour, whatever the number is, if you could evacuate them out through the secondary road, which would go by the detention pond, make its way out by lot number one sixty-two, then you could make your way through and move that traffic in the event of emergency, but it wouldn't be a through street for normal traffic, which would prevent the future issue of complaints of new vehicles on the existing neighborhood and offer some solution as to the, the traffic that would exist. Again, no engineer, just looking at the, the space to see if that would be an option to solve at least that issue.
Mr. Reed, is that something, are you following what Mr. Collins?
Yeah, you're talking about running that road like we were talking about earlier back up to the top, right? It, that, um, like I said, I, I mean, we can, but then you're, you've got a road that's gonna go through the, the trees that are on that back property line and then on the back, you know, the back of that huge house. I was just trying to avoid going back there just, just to get a, a handful of cars out the back. Uh, but, I mean, it's what, I mean.
And I wouldn't necessarily propose the road. I mean, that could, that could be green space that could be driven across if you had to route someone out.
Oh, you're talking about an, an emergency route for some, oh, okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I see what you're saying.
I'm not necessarily discussing a road. I just mean.
Well, we could, we could make that, to go, to go to your point, which is a very good point, we could make that walking trail for an emergency vehicle to get around. It could be, what, we could widen it enough to, so if they did have to get out, they could route them out. That, that's a good point.
That, that would prevent the future concern of traffic going through an existing neighborhood. If in fact this passes, it would afford you some ability at lot one forty as vacant space if you needed an emergency space for vehicles and still allow you for a one-lane emergency through. So if I needed to route someone out, I could do that and, and solve that issue.
I think that's a, um, doable suggestion to the problem and might fix, you know, Commissioner Burke's concern. Now, just to point out though, uh, McCormick Grove is right behind it and it's only one way in and one way out. I mean, that's, it wa- it is a common practice. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't be concerned, but, you know, the likelihood of emergency might be one every ten years, but it's still an issue, you know?
And, and, and Mayor, the only thing I would think there is, in your eye, it's, it's there, the, as we've seen with some of these other homes and we'll take, um, uh, let's take one of the, the new subdivision over off Cox Pike. With the density, you've, you've, it's not uncommon to find vehicles parked in the street and some other thing where McCormick Grove, you have a little more. It's rare to see a vehicle parked in the street in McCormick Grove compared to some of the others. So if we had some vent that we could get that out, that may at least remedy that situation and, and prevent the future concern of the additional traffic within the subdivision. and prevent the future concern of additional traffic within the subdivision.
And we've granted variances in the past on that rule. But usually it was an exception that made it make more sense. I think the last one we did, it came in one house deep, then it did a loop. So, unless you had an emergency at that very front house, everybody was still going to have a way to get out. So, I think this helps accomplish some of that. It makes it more tenable for myself.
Yeah, we just had to, yeah.
This is that issue somewhat. Still go back to the road issue, however, I'm going to backtrack just a little bit. What you were saying with the traffic report made a suggestion that with these houses coming in, that the city would need to widen the road. And the city's going to have to come up with money from somewhere to fix the problem that you're causing.
Yep.
In essence. Unless y'all want to donate the money to widen the road.
We are widening the road, the.
In front of your subdivision.
Correct, in front of ours and it goes through Cumberland, all the way, yeah, correct.
But then it narrows back down before we get to the nice busy traffic spot.
Yeah.
So, that doesn't really fix the problem. It makes it nicer for y'all.
Mm-hmm.
And the residents that'll be in these subdivisions, but it doesn't fix the access to Highway 100 or.
I agree.
Over on the Chester Road.
And just for clarity, I mean, I guess as we go along, you know, it's important on a first reading to get all the questions. But with the second reading, you know, if there are some concerns, you can always, you know, try to address those in between.
Okay.
Do anybody else have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve subject to the following. One, that all homes will be four-side masonry products. Two. Bear with me, I want to make sure I get this correct. So, just. Two, take out the stub street that's for identification purposes labeled as Petersborough Lane and move the lots between lot 140 and lot 130 such that the walking trail will be accessible as a means for emergency vehicles or, in the case of an emergency, ingress egress, I guess egress more importantly, from the subdivision. Number three, the recommendations from the traffic study. Number four, the recommendations of the engineer and staff comments. Number five, the approval of WADC and TDEC. And number six, that they complete the temporary cul-de-sac with sidewalk and curb and complete sidewalk connecting safe routes to school. And if anybody needs me to repeat any part of that, I will try.
I think you got it all, but just for any clarification, was there anything else the planning commission had requested that we didn't cover?
Did you mention the widening that so the emergency vehicles could get to?
I did, I did.
Mr. Owen, did we miss anything that you, or Ms. Castandra? Okay.
Mr. Pratchett, would you add to your motion before it's seconded to include all changes requested by the planning commission? Just to make sure we don't leave anything out.
Well, and number seven, to include all recommendations by the planning commission. I guess that would be in addition to what was part of our packet tonight.
Okay, we have a first. Do we have a second? Second. Any other discussion? Questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, we have two yeses and three nos. Sure. Commissioner Rainey?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Lucas?
Nay.
Okay, and Commissioner Burke's? Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Okay. We will move on to, well, I guess we'll have to read the C, D, and E and F and then defer them all, correct? Or no, actually, we're gonna, we can vote on C. Or D.
Both, C and D.
C and D, and then defer E and F. I just wanted to make sure before we got too far. Okay, item C, a resolution number 07-17.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent and approving a plan of services. Tax map 42, parcel 78, 87.71 acres, 78.01, 15 acres, 79, 13 acres, and 79.01, 16.04 acres. Total of 137.75 acres. 78, 18 Old Nashville Highway. Owners, Jennifer Buford and Rita Kidder.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, got a first. Can we get a second to set the?
Second.
Okay, got a first and second to set the public hearing. Commissioner Burke's and second was Lucas. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Whoa, 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 whoa. Thank you. Couple things. One, this is not just setting a public hearing. I was wrong when I stated that earlier and I've looked back at my packet. There's also a plan of services that is included in this. So, we're not only setting a public hearing for September, we're also adopting a resolution to.
A recommendation to the planning commission with the plan of services. Then the planning commission has to hear the plan of services and send it back to the board of commissioners for the actual annexation and the final approval of the plan of services.
Okay, so it's a recommendation at this one, I understand. So, this is going back to the planning commission, we're just adopting it or approving it.
It also says the public hearing though, which entails.
In September.
Notifications and all that.
Yeah, now.
Couple of things about this, if I may. Couple of things, and Mr. Collins, I think, hit the nail on the head earlier on this about just sort of gauging the interest of the board and whether or not this is something that we wanted to do in terms of annexing this property. And I think we can do one of two things. We can look at this tonight, discuss this tonight, and determine whether or not this is even something that we would want to consider in the future and maybe stop this before any more money is spent, either by a developer or by the city in terms of having an attorney or draft any documentation for this purpose or by having the planning commission consider this purpose in the future. So, I think it's something that needs to be considered. It's not just setting a public hearing. I think there's much more to this than just that. As far as the plan of services goes, this is a proposed annexation in this particular agenda item of 137 acres, I think is what I read. That is a significant amount of land that we are annexing, that we as a city will now have to, if this is developed, and I assume that it would be, that we will now have to provide those services for. And this is obviously going to be a subdivision that would be phased in. I mean, all of these homes that are part of the other two agenda items with respect to the rezoning wouldn't just appear overnight, I understand that. But nonetheless, I personally don't feel like that the city of Fairview is in a position to be able to provide services for this additional land that we would be taking in, that would be developed. And so, and I don't know the other board members' feelings on this issue. Those are my feelings. But if we, if it's not something that we're interested in doing, then before anybody spends any more money in an effort to annex and/or subsequently rezone this property, then I think it's something that we owe both the developer and the city, for that matter, at least the, to have a discussion about that tonight and decide whether or not this is something we're even interested in doing. I don't think we're under any obligation to annex land. This is a request by a homeowner or a landowner that obviously has land that's not in the corporate boundaries of the city of Fairview. And I think it's our decision. I mean, if we want to annex it, we can. If we don't, I think that's our prerogative. And I base that decision on, or my part of that decision, like I said, on the fact that I don't feel like that we're in a position as a city to be able to take on this additional territory in light of what's proposed to be built there and be able to support services for that area. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you for clarifying that we did discuss earlier. But you're right, totally left out the thinking process of what Mr. Collins said. We don't want to keep leading people on and letting them go through the process. But I would like to bring some things up from the planning commission and also just for your information and to answer one of the citizens' comment. We also spent an hour discussing at this meeting, at least, on this project, that what would the effects of the road? And we heard the citizens come, especially when another smaller development was on the road and some of the concerns. So, just for your information, the developer, they agreed to do all the engineer recommendations, which that would be the widening, turning on to Taylor Road. All the citizens talked about how unsafe Old Nashville Road was. And this developer, even though we would have lots of traffic, so I understand that, but they would do the road improvements for widening what is already unsafe road in the city. And the residents, we know that because A, I've drove it and then B, we had citizen after citizen after citizen come tell us how unsafe, the buses can't even get down there. So, this developer was willing to do the road improvements all the way down to Fernville Road. I just want to state that for the record. Yes, this is going to have a huge impact and yes, it's something the board really needs to consider when they go forward. But once again, I must say, the painful hour for the representatives is not for naught. I think we have an opportunity that if they are, this is approved, that we can make improvements to a much-needed road. And so, just to throw that out there and make sure the board understands. Any other questions? And we have the, if I guess it would be appropriate if we've had any questions for the engineer, we could do, and it's the same, Mr. Reed.
If I may, though, we're just considering annexation. I don't know what the engineer could contribute to whether or not we annex this property. I mean, this is not part of the rezoning.
Vice Mayor, I understand what you're saying. And but if somebody did have a question, they were unsure, is the development's the problem, then, you know, I don't see just offering. He doesn't have to come here and explain everything. I just wanted to make sure that the board knows that he is the same engineer and he can answer questions.
If I may, and I completely respect that, but here's my point. We have to consider these items separately and independently of one another. I mean, and I don't want there to be confusion between the two. And maybe I created that earlier by some of my comments. But the C and D are strictly about annexation. I mean, certainly E and F, which seems like was put on here prematurely, I absolutely think that someone can participate in a discussion about those. But in terms of annexation, I mean, by all means, if anybody has questions to ask, I mean, I just don't think that it's appropriate with respect to annexation.
I have a question.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, are you making a motion that we, that we not annex this property? And the vice mayor's not listening to me.
I'm sorry, I was trying to get my mic closer to my mouth.
Are you making a motion that we do not annex this property?
I'm not making a motion at all. I'm not offering a motion for annexation. There's been no motion offered.
Okay.
Yeah, now, there is, there was, there was starting a motion, correct, Ms. Johnson? We had a motion.
Oh, I still have to.
But it could be voted up or down. But also, there was clarification that was made after that I don't know for Mr. Burke's if that was what he was aware of, you know, because I did use the term, it's just a public hearing. But taking consideration what the vice mayor said, it's not just a public hearing. It is actually, as Mr. Collins, is an opportunity not to have a developer go through too much and spend a lot of money if we don't know if we have the vote. So, we can take, obviously, a vote to either send this through the process or not. And if Commissioner Burke's wants to remove his motion or amend his motion, he can.
I'm fine with what motion is this.
Okay. Okay, so the motion was to allow the annexation to move the process. And he first did a first and I did a second, right? I think I did.
I've heard from a lot of citizens, everyone in this area has said they're not in favor of it. I've actually not had anyone say they are, other than the developer, Mr. Reed and Mr. Reed. And they're in favor of it for obvious reasons. But I've not had a single citizen say, yes, we're in favor of this. And I would ask my fellow commissioners, have they had anyone say, yes, they're in favor of this? Annexation?
No.
I haven't either, but I don't know how many of them are really aware because the biggest concern was the road issues. I don't know how many are really aware that so, if there will be so many road improvements to dangerous roads. I don't know if that would change their opinion and we wouldn't know unless we went to a public hearing. And they may not change at all. I mean, it would just be, you know, giving them an opportunity to say, does that make a difference to us?
Mayor, I think you're correct. I don't think we're going to hear any different opinions from anyone that comes out. It's very possible we may have a large contingency of people show up and say, yes, we're for this because it's bouncing act. Bringing this property in with the understanding that it's going to be developed, that's the idea of bringing it in for, I believe, 280 homes, would bring in new people to the community, which is good and bad. It's great to have new people come, make new friends. However, we have to provide for them, like the vice mayor said. We have to provide police service, we have to provide fire service. There's going to be an effect on our school systems with this many people. I think it averaged 2.5 people per home, as I recall. That's a lot of new people. You consume at least one child on average, probably. I don't think we have half kids running around anywhere. So, that's going to, it's going to affect our schools. It's going to affect the traffic through that area. It's going to affect just general traffic through town. On a good side, those people will be spending money in Fairview, which will increase our tax base. I know we don't like to talk about money, it sounds dirty, but that is a fact. On the opposite side, how much does it cost to provide for those services? And does the increased taxes make up for it? At what point? At what point do we have to add a new fire station because we have all these homes at the end of town away from our current fire department? If we have to build a new fire department that far out, we have to fully staff that fire department. You're looking at close to a million dollars in salaries we have to add. You're looking at purchasing new fire trucks, safety equipment, fire equipment, all of that stuff. Those are things we have to consider. That many citizens coming into that area, do we have to start including more police officers? Those are all things that we have to consider, and they have a cost. It's a finite cost, or continuing cost, excuse me. So, it's a hard decision. Again, I haven't had a single citizen say, yes, I want this. If I had, you know, that would make a difference, in my opinion. But it has not happened yet.
Any other discussion? So, all in favor on the motion to allow item C to move forward through the process? All in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion dies.
I'm sorry. I voted no. I apologize.
So, that takes care of D. Do we have to read or do anything, or?
Doesn't take care of D.
It doesn't. Resolution 08-17.
Resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent and approving a plan of services, tax map 42, portion of parcel 77.08.60 acres, 7312 Taylor Road, owner Kenny Taylor.
Do we have a, anybody that wants to do a motion on the table? Okay. Last call. Any motions? Okay. Motion dies. And we can move on to, well, E and F now are, no, we don't have a need to read it.
Madam Mayor, I think we're past nine o'clock.
Yes, we are.
Our courtesy break.
It's 9:15. So, I take it you would like to go into break? So, if I can get a motion for our break.
Motion.
Second. Got a first and second. Let's take our break.
Okay, we'd like to open back the meeting. Sorry, I probably should have given a time limit, but I think we've been sitting here so long, everybody enjoyed standing up for a few minutes. We will move on to G, and it says Agency Funding Process. And Mr. Collins, do you want to provide something or share?
Yes, Mayor, members of the Commission. As you know, there's $25,000, or there are $25,000 budgeted in the fiscal year 2017-18 budget for the purpose of agency funding. We discussed during the budgeting process that there are a few agencies in the city who, or who serve the city, nonprofits and the like, who would benefit from subsidy or subsistence from the city regarding some of the programs that they provide. Staff and I have looked at this, and we want to make sure that we move forward with a way that we can appropriately review those applications, and do it in such a way where if they make a proposal to the city for funding, that they outline specifically what that is, rather than leaving those requests open-ended. I sent an email out, and I'll follow up on that for your consideration. But as it relates to the city funding for that, again, we have the $25,000 available. And what we would like to consider, or be considered, and this may not necessarily have to be for a vote, but certainly for discussion, would be three things that that agency would provide. First is that all requests for funding for fiscal year 2017-2018 must be submitted to the city no later than August 31, 2017. Obviously, we could move that back if we needed to, but that gives us some time for those agencies to get the benefit of the funding for our full fiscal year, which began July 1. So requests would be submitted to the city no later than August 31, 2017. Our expectation is that we would be able to review those, provide those to the board, and you be able to make some decision on those during the month of September. That would get us to the end of the first quarter of our fiscal year. Number two, applicants must have nonprofit status at the time of the submission. So rather than be a new nonprofit or some other agency, we would want them to be established at the time they request the funds. And number three, we would request that the applicants provide three documents: a letter on agency letterhead stating the specific amount of funding requested and the intended uses for those funds, the agency's most recent financial report, and that can be audited or un-audited depending on the size or function of the agency, and copies of the agency's nonprofit certification. If we were able to get those, then we would submit those to you again in September. That would give you the month of September to close out the first quarter of the fiscal year and determine some sort of level of funding for that. So just to recap, we would request that they submit by August 31. They'd be nonprofit status at the time of the application, and effectively they provide us the funding that they're asking for, the uses, and their financial report. That's generally what we would like the guideline to be. We can post that to the website, get it advertised. Again, it's not necessarily a vote that you'd have to take, unless you want to offer a resolution kind of memorializing that. But we do want to let you know we're working on some guidelines so we can move forward with those funding requests. That's what we have for you tonight.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Mr. Collins?
Mayor, absent any questions, we'll go ahead and move forward with advertising of that, make sure we get that to you as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you. Item H, Resolution Number 11-7-17.
A resolution authorizing the Fire Department of Fairview, Tennessee to participate in the POOL Safety Partners Matching Grant Program. Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second discussion.
How much are we talking about as far as this grant providing?
This grant we participate in every year from POOL, there is a matching cap, which is $1,500. We usually use that to purchase turnout gear for firefighters. Something we have to purchase anyway. Two sets usually cost us in the neighborhood of $5,000. So that just offsets the cost by $1,500.
We'll make sure we weren't talking about a $100,000 grant. We're signing up to match, so.
Yes, no, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Just, and the money is going to come, is that something you already budgeted for? You don't need any additional, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Just permission to proceed.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item I, Agenda Distribution. Commissioner Rainey.
Well, Mayor, thank you. I know that this past week, there's been some confusion and emails back and forth about the approval of the agenda. So I simply would like to make a motion that the agenda be sent out to all commissioners at one time, and that our city recorder gives us a date and time that we have to respond if we have additions or corrections, and that then she's free to send that to the newspaper.
Okay. I, when I saw this on the agenda, the, the, one of the things Mr. Collins answered, I guess, in an email was, you know, he wasn't aware of the process of what we've done. But as long as I've been here, because the mayor, the only job is to chair the meeting versus the Board of Commissioners. So obviously, when you're the chair of the meeting, you're responsible for the agenda. So the question was asked, well, is that a, you know, ordinance or resolution? I haven't been able to tell you why we've done it. I just know that's how it's always been done. So basically, what would happen, which I have never denied anything from being on the agenda, it was just more of a courtesy. I look over, see something's missing, kind of thing. And then Brandy got, you know, or Ms. Johnson had the final go. So once I started looking, and I knew, I think there's something that Mayor Toddy had presented at one point. But as we got to, I realized this was going to be on the agenda, I thought, well, you know, let me just call another city and see, because, you know, is it a Robert's Rules of Order thing? We've got so many governing bodies. So I talked to Mayor Rick Graham today, and he, they used the same process. The only difference was that it went to, the Board of Commissioners put on a request, and they sent it to the mayor, the city manager, and the recorder. Then we looked over it, if there was any, you know, order procedures or whatever that needed to be discussed. And they also had the week notice and get it, you know, to the deadline. And so it's done similarly. So I asked him, I said, do you know why y'all do it this way? And he said, well, no, we've always done it this way. And you're the chair of the meeting, so obviously, you wouldn't expect somebody to lead a meeting and not have some prior order, you know, and say of how it's being presented. So with that being said, I don't know that it's ever been a problem. The only question that came up is there was agenda item left off. And, and then it, the final conclusion had a bunch of additions. And I made a question of how does, you know, how did this happen? It came out on, you gave it to me Thursday afternoon, and by Friday afternoon, we had five more things. Well, we have a deadline Thursday at 10 o'clock. So from Thursday night, we had additional things. Now, a couple of them were mine, but they were broken out. It was the item that was left off, but it was broken into three. So, but when I originally got the agenda after it, there was a couple more additions. So I just kind of had questioned that, and as a courtesy, CC'd the Board of Commissioners. But, you know, I don't know that it's a broken system. You know, obviously, y'all are welcome to discuss that and debate it. But it just really, and I'd be happy to check with other Board and Commissioners in other cities on what they do. But it just, to me, makes sense to have a second set of eyes and to be able to process the agenda. Brandy, have I ever asked you to remove anything from the agenda?
No, but I could.
No, yeah. So, I mean, I don't know that that's the problem unless you, you know, just want to take that from me, you know?
Well, Mayor, I don't, I don't, I don't think that it's something we were trying to take from you. I think it's something that, you know, we're offering five sets of eyes to look at it, that we all get it, and we all see it. I mean, that takes some liability off of you, I mean, or any mayor. If some of them were to be off later, and some Commissioners would say, my stuff didn't get on the agenda. So if we all see it equally, and we all send any corrections or additions to our city recorder, I would think that would take some of the responsibility of having accusations flung later.
Yeah.
Off the mayor.
Well, and I do think that that's an interesting concept. But maybe the attorney can lead into, if we're going back and forth about an agenda and the agenda, isn't that an email violation of a sunshine? Because it's just as dangerous to go back and forth because these items are going to be voted on. And if you're discussing whether or not it should be put in what, you know, order, I mean, I don't know. I think it's just not necessary. But I will go with whatever the board wants to do. Yes.
Mr. Potter, before you start, the only issue, Mayor, with you looking at and seeing if anything's missed, you don't know who else has sent something in to be put on the agenda, so you wouldn't know that it wasn't on there. So that's the only reason I think I care to look at it beforehand, because you wouldn't know if my item didn't make it on there, unfortunately. So it would prevent that issue.
Yeah, but if you did it like the other cities said, and you put it to the city recorder and the city manager and the mayor, you do have, if you had to send, I mean, there's so many times, and I haven't been difficult, like, I didn't know what Commissioner Rainey's agenda meant. I just assumed, in all good faith, she's bringing, you know, something a citizen or somebody has directed her to do. So, I mean, it's just a, that's the stuff we're trying to work on, is the process. I can't answer it. I don't know how much research. I know Mr. Collins said he would research it. I don't know if you did find, do you have something?
Mayor, if I could, if I could add my thoughts about this, a couple of things. Prelimarily, in, in response to your question about would it be a violation of the sunshine law to go back and forth about an agenda item, my answer is no.
Okay.
Not unless you're deliberating. I mean, I think that the key there is, are you deliberating about an issue and trying to discuss what decision ought to be made? I mean, a lot of people think that the sunshine law prevents two members of the same body from even having a conversation. But you, you're not that, it's not that restrictive so long as you're not deliberating. In other words, you could see one another and say, hey, is that item on the agenda tonight? Yes, it is. See you tonight. That's not a violation of the sunshine law. But when you start talking about the merits of something, that's a violation of sunshine law. But second, I saw this on the agenda, this issue, and I thought, well, what does that mean? So I just sort of did a little bit of preliminary looking at it myself. And in your code, I don't know what, what your tradition's been, but in your code, at item 1-103, Order of Business, the very first sentence is, "An agenda of each meeting's business shall be prepared and distributed to each commissioner at least three days prior to the meeting, which shall contain the following regular order of business." So that's in there. It doesn't talk about how items get on the agenda, it just says how it will be distributed. So you can do that any way you want to do it. I do know that your code also says that you're governed by Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised. I took a look at those, and those rules don't prohibit you from adding an agenda item at the meeting. I mean, I know it's, it's a practice, probably. You want to get it publicized so the public can see it. But whenever you come to a meeting, any commissioner can say, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda by, with the modification of adding item 23 regarding the sale of fireworks in the town of Fairview. And if that motion's And if that motion's seconded and approved, that's now on your agenda. So I'm not, I don't know if you've passed a resolution in the past about publicizing it? Brandy shaking her head, yes, so I don't know, I haven't read that, I've not seen the resolution, but unless you have restricted yourself about modifying the agenda, certainly Roberts Rules of Order allows you, any entity to do that. These meetings are regular meetings, they're not special called meetings, that's a completely different animal. When you have a special called meeting, you're limited to only the business that you have called the meeting for. These, this body meets the first and third Thursdays of every month, the public has noticed to be here, the public knows the business is going to be conducted regarding the city of Fairview on those nights. It's a courtesy that you're giving to the citizens to say, these are all the items that we intend to discuss at the meeting. You're not required to do that unless you have made that your own internal rule.
Just to clarify, we, we don't have a rule about publishing the agenda per, Mr. Potter's correct about that, we don't have to do that, that is a courtesy. What I was going to say is, we do have a resolution regarding adding an agenda item that was developed, and what was determined was it had to be an emergency or exigent circumstance and have a hearing in order to add an item to the agenda.
Okay, I've not seen that, but that's some clarification.
Yeah, that's something I don't know that we shouldn't reconsider, but go ahead.
Well, and, and I, I think we should as well. I mean, there was a time when I think that agenda, or that resolution rather, served a purpose, I think that time has passed. You know, it had become habit for previous boards to add items to the agenda last minute, maybe for some motives that weren't always pure, at least that was the thought process. But anyway, neither, that's neither here nor there. But I think we should revisit that resolution, because, case in point, tonight, I had come to City Hall a couple of weeks ago, and, and I make a habit, and I probably shouldn't do this, of actually, when I want agenda item on the agenda, I actually come up here and tell somebody, hey, this is what on the, on the agenda, I probably should send that via email, but nonetheless, I came specifically about the funding for the baseball facility a couple of weeks ago, and, and I'll take the blame for it, because everyone was busy when I was here, and they probably didn't remember exactly what I said, and didn't write it down, and it didn't get on the agenda. Well, I didn't know that it didn't get on the agenda until I looked at the agenda Monday morning of this week. At that point, the agenda had already been circulated, it had already been published in the paper. I was aware of the resolution, and if we still need to take some action with respect to that resolution tonight, with respect to item P that we added to the agenda, then that, that may be appropriate. But to go back to the motion that was made by Commissioner Rainey, I do agree that I think it would be helpful, certainly for all of us, to have the ability to at least see the agenda, and if that means we have an earlier deadline to accomplish that purpose, then so be it. But I think it would be helpful if we could all at least see it, so that if some mistake was made in, in communicating a, a specific item, because some of these are time sensitive, then at least we can catch it before we have taken that courtesy and published it in the paper.
I think, I think also, a courtesy, the, the mayor is the chair of the meeting, so I think whenever a item is requested to be added to the agenda, to me, the appropriate channel would be to, to either send an email both to, or, or to contact both the mayor and the city recorder and say, I'd like for this item to be placed on the agenda. And I think that, that way, the chair knows that the item is being requested to be placed on the agenda, and, and it's, it's on the agenda, and then if you come to the meeting, and, and the, the natural course of events would be to approve the agenda, you do that at the beginning of every one of your meetings, but at the time you approve it, any commissioner, I think, has the prerogative at that point in time to ask that there be an item added to the agenda, or then item be moved on the agenda, we move this item up, or move this item down, I think that's.
Or remove it.
Was there a?
Or remove.
Was there a second Commissioner Rainey's motion?
I don't think she formally made a motion.
Well, I think she did.
She did, she did offer a motion, there was no second.
Okay, in light of there being no second, then I would make a motion, and I, I don't know if there's been a call for a second, have, have you caught?
Uh, I don't know if there was a time given for a second, there was a lot of discussion immediately after the motion.
Yeah, it just went into the motion and then discussion. So there's no second.
Procedurally, I would, can, can we ask that there be a call for a, say, I don't know what the proper.
Do you mind if we ask Commissioner, Commissioner Rainey, do you mind repeating your motion, please? Do you mind restating it?
That the agenda be sent to all the commissioners, we all be given a deadline to report to Brandy if we have an addition or a correction to the agenda before she sends it to the paper.
Do you have, do you have a recommendation on when the deadline should be, how many days prior to the meeting?
I, I think that needs to come from Brandy.
Okay.
May, may I add, again, I know there's not been a motion, or a second to that motion, so I'm probably not doing this correctly, but what I would like to add to that is exactly what Mr. Potter just said, is that the way we actually ask for agenda items to be added from this point forward is via email to Brandy and the mayor. And, and then it can certainly still be distributed to all five commissioners before it is sent as a courtesy to the paper, and then we can put whatever deadline on that that the city recorder needs, but I just think that would be helpful, and I agree with Mr. Potter, I think as a courtesy, we should send that to the mayor and to Brandy, and then we can see it, and, and it go from there. So that would be, I would ask that that be added to the motion, I, I guess, is what I'm asking.
That's good with me, but that's two separate, two separate things, but that's, if we can wrap them into one, that's good.
Um, yeah, I'm fine with that, it, you know, I think that's whatever, you know, it's, I'm just doing what we've done, and it made sense, but I'm always willing to have second eyes to look at something. I don't really know that it would affect Brandy's deadlines that she necessarily has, it's just a short window, because she's dealing with the having to get things to the paper, so you would have to take in consideration, if she did it, it, you know, whatever time that you're going to have to respond within a 12 hours, or what, however you want to do it, in a decent amount of, you're going to have to figure out the timeframe. I don't, making you up at a day just for we can all look at it is putting another restriction on you.
No responses at approval, I mean, I mean, if you want to respond, great, but I'm just saying, I don't think you have to put a deadline on it. Here, here's what, and again, procedurally, we, we probably need to have a, a training on Roberts Rules of Order at some point, I think that would be very helpful, but there's not been a second to the motion. Can I offer a motion?
I thought you did second it.
No, no, I've not seconded, I've made a recommendation as to additions to the motion, but I have not offered a second.
In absence of a.
Well, the motion died.
Okay.
In, in, in absence of a second in that case, because we haven't gotten to that point, Ms. Rainey could either withdraw her motion, which will be appropriate, Commissioner Crutcher offer his motion in consideration of a second, would be the simplest manner to accomplish that.
Then I will withdraw mine.
Perfect. Ms. Johnson, when is the, what is the current deadline for the agenda? Is it always Thursday before the week of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If, do we need to?
We already have a short, a short window there.
Do we need to change that to Wednesday to accomplish this purpose?
Let me, let me offer this, in that shortening that increases the stress on getting that agenda done, because we, in, for example, in weeks where there's court on Friday, then you don't get much done at City Hall, the following week would be the deadline for the agenda, that gives you really two and a half days. Maybe I misunderstood.
No, you, you, here's my thing, what I've heard is that there is, look, I've been here for three years, and we've done it the way that we've done it, and it's worked fine, so I'm fine leaving it alone. What I've heard is that there is a problem, I'm trying to offer a solution, and in offering that solution, I'm trying to accommodate the city recorder as part of that. So if she needs two days extra, if she needs three days extra, whatever it is, just tell it, tell me what it is you need, and I will make that part of my motion.
I would like to make a motion that we defer it to another meeting, let the city recorder sit down, I would be happy to sit with the city manager, come up with that, we can present it, and then that way, we have an ideal exactly what we're voting on, not opposed to the commissioners, both vice mayor and commissioner's suggestion, but just to, you know, we're putting her on the spot of when, you know, and realistically, I don't know if that's what we want to do. So I have a motion on the table, if anybody would like to second that. Okay, so, do we have a motion on this?
I'm not sure, let Vice Mayor Crutcher finish his motion.
Well, I was in the process of communicating with the city recorder about what it is that she might need to be able to accomplish, what it is that we've just spent some time discussing.
The current deadline is 10 a.m. on Thursday, I think if we move that to end of business on Wednesday, that gives plenty of time for me to send the agenda out first thing Thursday, and you guys have the day Thursday to review.
Can I ask a question? The reason we have the deadline as it is, is just so we can make it into the paper as a courtesy, is that correct?
That is correct.
By, I think by state law, we have to have it three days prior to a meeting, distributed to the Board of Commissioners. It's also what our ordinance is. I actually looked this up, I was trying to figure it out myself. However, we, our practice has always been to publish it in the paper, as well as we put it on our website, so I'm not asking to undo that, but just so we, everyone understands, that's why the deadline is what it is.
That's correct.
Okay.
And you have to understand, we do, our local paper is the best way to advertise, but it, it only has a weekly publication, so it makes it a little more difficult, and that's why it's been set up the way it has.
Mr. Crutcher, would you consider adding to your motion that we repeal the current resolution that prevents us from adding an agenda item at a meeting without an emergency?
I don't have an issue with that at all, if that's procedurally appropriate. Okay, so I want to offer a motion. My motion is, is that the Board of Commissioners or anyone else that has the ability to ask for items to be added to the agenda, do so by the end of business on the Wednesday of the week preceding the week of the Board of Commissioners meeting. That that agenda then be forwarded to all five commissioners. And if there are any changes that need to be made, that those changes be submitted to the city recorder by the end of business on Thursday of the week preceding the Board of Commissioners meeting. And that the requirement to add an item to the agenda, for there to be a hearing to determine whether or not there's exigent circumstances, or it's an emergency, that that resolution, and I don't have that number, but that that resolution be repealed.
Vice Mayor, and I hate to say this, but do you also want to include in your motion that to add an item to the agenda, we send it to the recorder and the mayor?
Did I not say that?
No.
If I didn't, that, that needs to be part, yeah, that the items would be forwarded via email to both the city recorder and the mayor, no later than the end of business on Wednesday, the week preceding the week of the BOC meeting. Second, thank you.
Okay, we have a first and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item J is mayor's building access, and the only reason I had put this on was because of the planning commission meeting the other night, we had some different changes, and it's no fault to anybody, but, you know, at one time, we had a staff member that was here, and that made everything probably secure, and then we had, just because of this change of no longer requiring an officer at the planning commission meeting, I think just we were accustomed to Sergeant Hill doing the securing. So at the point of which that happened, it was, I was left, and it takes a special key, and I didn't have access, but I did email Mr. Collins about this matter, and, you know, he said definitely that we have this change, you know, we can accommodate and try to make sure you're able, or whoever's, you know, of the board that is the last member knows or can secure the building. So, you know, but the, it brought up a lot of questions, because I had, my natural instinct was to go downstairs, because we did have some sissy taping that night, and so I tried to use my card key, which I don't have access anymore, I got cut off at some point, and they did some changes, but I just want, it got me question about what's our procedure? So I, I sent an email with, you know, a couple, and tried to lump a, a lot of it together, and it's all things that we can handle, it's just us knowing as a new board and being with, you know, new city manager, that I did want to bring it up for discussion. But one of my things about the downstairs, and I don't know if the board knows this, or even the citizens, you know, we've been told a lot lately, we're all equal, I mean, there's, there's no difference. But it's hard for the citizens to realize that, because when you vote for a mayor, you have this ideal of what the mayor does, which I've always thought was the most ironic thing is, I can do nothing without a majority vote, which, that wasn't ironic, I knew that. But I've always thought the most humorous thing to me is, in a state of emergency, I have control of the whole city, and I just have never understood how that happens, you know, the day-to-day operations, you know, you don't have save. So I'm bringing this up to, A, try to figure out what are policy procedures, how, you're thinking it's important, and want others, the board's input, and the city staff, that I have access, because if there was a state of emergency, and I really was the head of the city, I can't even get in our own to police department. So we need to change those, we need to talk about, and I'd like to see us talk about as a board, what are plans. Now, the police department and fire department, they have wonderful staff, and they go to trainings, and they know what to do, and I seriously doubt in those days that come that I would be, I would totally rely on their expertise, but I just wanted to just kind of bring that up, and I think, Mr. Collins, there's not a problem with me having access if I, to go to the police department. It's just, I'm assuming it's a fluke, or was it intentionally cut off?
Mayor, the way that, the way that that was done, there was some information that went out when we changed the key, we rekeyed the building approximately six months ago, and within that, we also issued new ID cards. With that, there was some information that went out that we had elected officials with the upstairs access to this building, and then we restricted anyone's access throughout the city who didn't have a need to be in any other building for any other thing. For example, everybody had access to everything, every key card went everywhere, and obviously, we needed to correct that, insofar as the fire department didn't have access to the police department, we shut those down, for a variety of reasons, is, is how we got there. So, so that's how we arrived. The question specifically about elected official access throughout the police department or any other buildings, my inclination on that is no. There are a variety of reasons why that would be, safety, security, evidence, police, I mean, all sorts of things that, that I wouldn't do, now, if the board wants to do that, that's their, that's their privilege to do.
Yeah.
But I, I would, I would offer no on, on that question. Yes, sir?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I didn't mean to cut you off, if you had something else to say, by all means, say it. I agree with Mr. Collins, I, I don't think that there's any reason for any of us, quite frankly, to have access to the PD or the fire department, or any other facility other than the upstairs to this building, which we, you know, use frequently. Again, for all of the same reasons, I, I see the same issues coming up, I think it has been an issue in the past with members of the Board of Commissioners just freely going down to the police department. If I have the need to go to the police department, I think I can go through the front. If I have the need to go to the police department, I think I can go through the front door, or I can come up here and ask Mr. Collins to escort me to the PD. Same for the fire department or other areas of the city. And I understand what the mayor's saying, but quite frankly, in a state of emergency, I, I intend on calling 911. It's probably not, I'm probably not going to, you know, try to get access to any of these facilities and may even not want to be at either of the two facilities. But, in my opinion, I, I think it just creates a liability other, for us to have access.
Well, and I'm not asking for y'all to have access, I'm saying me. And I, I get what you're saying. And I, I have nev, I've gone to the police department and used that key in six years, maybe three times, and one was to go to the restroom, you know? It's not, but I'm just saying that whole process of, and I'm not talking state of emergency, I'm talking natural disasters, whatever, it is in our charter. And I, I'm not wanting to abuse it. But in this situation, I needed to make sure somebody was still coming up to secure. It was, no, I wasn't going down there to see, I mean, obviously, you probably have separate locks. Any evidence room, any equipment that's held down there. It's not going to be access to guns or files. I mean, surely that's locked, it's walking in the building, being able to go. But, you know what, I don't really care. I just wanted to bring it up because even up to not long ago, in the last year, I had access. Even after you sent out the email, I still, my card key worked. And so, you know, it was just brought to my attention because, A, we need to have a protocol, and it just needs to be discussed. It's fine, I mean, I could care less. But, I don't think y'all realize that, you know, I'm really supposed to have a walkie-talkie that I can communicate. Not that I would, I'm not going to call y'all. There's emergency procedures that I have, and maybe you can look it up and clarify that for them. The city attorney can help, but, I mean, I'm just saying, what if? And, you know, it is what it is. And then there's no vote that has to be taken. I just wanted to have this conversation, yes?
I will, I have two things really quickly. Number one, I, I agree with Vice Mayor. I can't see any reason why anyone up here would need access to the, what I call the tunnel. But secondly, on the building access up here, excuse me, I do believe that in, in the, maybe, city manager can correct me, power outage or something happens to our key card access to here. I, I think we do, this board does need a hard key.
Agreed, yes, sir.
To be able to, in those kind of cases, the, the issue that the mayor had the other night not being the miscommunication on who was going to kind of lock up. And without having a hard key, there was no way for her to lock up this building. So I do think that we do need to have a, a key for that. But again, I, I can see no reason why any of us would need access to the back entrance or the tunnel to the police department.
Understood. We, we can get the, the hard keys, the, the issue with the door specifically, and we'll get you one of these keys as well. The doors, for the front door of City Hall is a, a pushbar door. And you can unlock the door, the, if you use a hard key, it will let you in the front door and it will activate the lock so you can open the door. That key will not actually unlock the door and remain locked. You do that with, with, it's just a square key. We can provide you with one of those as well. So you would be able to have your key to get in and lock or unlock that, that pushbar if you needed to. We also met with staff, just in oversight, when they had the meeting last night, it was late. We do have some new staff, and they were, everybody thought someone else was going to lock the door, and they missed it. We have met with all of our department heads since then, some of them twice, some of them recently as today. And the policy that we have in place is, before you leave, make sure the door's locked. And we all know where that access key is upstairs. So everyone here, all the department heads know where that key is, and we can get you individually the key that gets you in and the key that locks it, and just get you copies of those. We'd be glad to do that.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir?
I do want to point out, all four years as a Commissioner, I never even had a key and didn't want one. It wasn't because I had no need to have a key because there was always city staff that covered and always had permission to use the number. So I'm, I'm just saying, this is not an issue. I have a hard key, like you're saying. The problem is the push door requires a different key, and the building was unsecured. And, you know, at that point, what's the protocol? Well, it was late, you know, you weren't, you know, obviously, I didn't want to be calling. It was, seemed logical to go to the police department. And then, I wasn't even sure that you didn't have something in place. So that's where the conversation comes to. Maybe it is the police department secures the building after a certain hour. I don't know. So I'm wanting to know your policy, and then we just needed to talk about what the access to the building. The requirements from a Commissioner to Mayor, even though our voting abilities are the same, I was attending five and six meetings in this building where before, a Commissioner really typically may not have to attend but the Board of Commissioners unless they were appointed. So with making that point and just educating, the process is, you know, yeah, we, we all are going to be here, especially now we're changing some of, and a key might, a hard key might be the way to go. But I just feel like that, need to know what the protocol is. We got new people, new staff, and as long as I know it, and we're not leaving our building open where somebody could come vandalize it, break in, steal our stuff, that's what's important. You don't think I need to go to the police department, great, that saves me. But I just, I'm just saying, at some point, the change, I don't know when it happened, and somebody should have probably told me, you cut off my access. That's all I have to say.
Oh, Mayor?
Yes?
I'll say, I never knew I had access to it.
Didn't.
To start off with. As I recall, when we, when you go down this door and you go through the keyed, electronic keyed door, that takes you right to where the holding cells are, does it not?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
My concern would be this. If any of us were to go down there while an officer's in the process of having to put someone in that holding cell, all of a sudden you throw yourself in that mix unknowingly because you opened the door, all of a sudden you're there, that creates a safety hazard, in my opinion. It creates possible liability. That, that's my concern. If it opened up somewhere else, that might be different, but that's not the spot where you want to have an officer get surprised by someone opening up the door on him. Additionally, I understand evidence is kept elsewhere. If it's done properly, it's locked up. However, in the process of collecting that evidence, it's not locked up at that point. And if you get near it, the issue is, do you have to be included on the chain of custody? That you're there, and that's, as a sneaky defense attorney, not that I know any of those people in this room, that's something that can be used. So, just from those points of view, I think it's best if none of us have access to the police department through our cards. We can go down the front door, there's always going to be someone there. We can get buzzed in and do anything we need to do.
Well, there's not always somebody there, but you can always pick up the phone and do the non-emergency number. Now, in working hours, sure. But this was at 10:30 at night, and they're out on the patrol. And we have a real problem if we're not securing evidence. So I don't see where that's a liability. But, I'm done with my discussion when this is concerned. I just want a protocol, so if y'all can get something in writing for us and, you know, proceed for, I'll know. It's not, it doesn't have to be for any other reason of who I need to contact, what I need to do, and like, who, you know, if I have the keys. I don't even have all the new officer's number, so it's not even, you know, it's just, let's get the protocol. Not a big deal, and I don't think we have to discuss, yes?
Those that may not know me, I'm the Assistant Chief, Robert Odom. I, I've recently started here, back in March. So I'm, I'm really not familiar with how Williamson County mayors within the county operate. I do have experience from Dixon County, and, and the Dixon mayor and the city mayor do not have access to the police department. Some of the reasons why, everybody's made some very good points here. And, and another point is this. Anyone that has access to the building, if, if something is compromised within the department, everyone will fall into an investigation. So it's really kind of a, a safety net to keep those that really, you know, if there's not legitimate business going on there, you, you won't be subject to an investigation. So it, it, that's, that kind of keeps the liability off of, of everyone else. So I, I don't, I don't know if that's going to help, but, you know, if we decide whatever the protocol is, you know, but everybody's made some good points.
Yeah, well, no, thank you. And I, I just think that's it, we need to know what it is. And like I said, I didn't know that something I always had was cut off. So I want to have that discussion, and, you know, that's why I brought it on the agenda. But I was going to wrap it up, and I don't think there has to be an outcome tonight if you just, and I know y'all are busy, hard at work, change, you know, working on improving in protocols. But I, anytime we have something in writing, it's just going to make it clear that we can refer. I mean, going back to the agenda, it's not in writing, all I could tell you is that's what we always did. So, thank you for your input, and thank you for coming up. Okay. Any other discussion? Are we clear that if you will get that in some form, whatever?
We are.
Procedure, thank you. Okay, the other page would be staff attendance and meetings, and which I think we just discussed that, so that really should have been one. So I don't know that we need to hash that out, so unless somebody wants to add something. I do have one question, though. We used to, city manager has always come to the planning commission. And since you have been here, Mr. Collins, you no longer attend a regular basis. I don't know if y'all want to look into that. I don't know if that's just another habit that always happened, or if that was some requirement that wasn't passed on to you, or, you know, and I know you've read all our stuff, and if it was there, you'd probably seen it, but...
Mayor, it wasn't passed on to me, however, we have met with staff and, and we decided that we, I will need to go to those. I mean, obviously, there are a lot of meetings, you're here a lot, but there's, there's no issue with doing that?
Okay. Okay. Any other input? Okay, and the other item L was just, like I said, I tried to put all this together, but it got, broke up, and maybe it's easier. Use of properties, I know you were, we had a citizen concern. I had the concern about this, like, you know, how are we securing? But did have a citizen's concern about park. I know you and staff are working on opening and closing procedures. If you will take those procedures as, whenever you get them, and just let us know as the Board of Commissioners, you know?
I have it now.
Huh?
I have it now.
Okay, go ahead.
As, as I understand it, the, the concern, and I spoke with this person, Mr. Schinkel, who was actually one of the applicants for the park board. I had the privilege to speak with Mr. Schinkel a week before last, and he expressed to me a concern that the park wasn't opening at the stated time that it was opening. Specifically, the park is advertised to open at sunrise. The discussion that he and I had was that he had arrived at sunrise at the park on a couple of occasions, and there was no one there to open the park. I advised him that, in my opinion, sunrise was a bit arbitrary, for a variety of factors we can get into or not. And that, number one, we need to make sure when we say it's going to open, it's going to open. Secondly, we, we need to, we need to determine what that is. I expressed to him that I believe that sunrise probably was not a good indicator. He, he then advised me that I was not correct in that he used the sunrise time off of the National Weather Service to establish that time, which is a bit difficult for the city to maintain as part of staffing for, for numerous reasons. We talked about establishing a set time to open the park, be it 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, whatever time there would be. That would be easier for us to establish that. Part of the issue we have is, with the backup opening the park being the fire department, that's okay unless the part of, fire department's unavailable. Aside from that, the police department can be another issue, just for the nature of what they do and where they are. So the first inclination was to establish a time and adjust our staffing schedules to open it at that specific time. As we, as we grew into that discussion, part of the, one of the things we, we observed was, number one, the staffing. Can we do that at that specific time and not alter work dates? The second issue that we discussed was giving people's adherence to time. How do you address that when the time changes? Who staffs, all these things that come in, they can just be cumbersome. So what we arrived at was simply removing the gate at the entrance to the park. I know that sounds a bit harsh, however, if I can explain. The gate at the main entrance to the park is only a gate for the roadway, and it's one of probably 20 entrances that someone can use if they want to enter the park and, and partake in some activity. They can park on the backside, they can park in this building parking lot in access, at the library. Fire department, you can park there and just walk around the gate, or ride your bike if you want to. So the bait, the gate is nearly symbolic. What we discussed in favor of that is simply to remove the gate, establish the park time being open as during daylight hours. We would then remove the gate, it would be there. We will have police patrols there with signage as you enter the park that let everyone know that the park is open only during daylight hours. Any, any violators or anyone caught in the park after daylight hours or other time would be subject to arrest. We would simply then, as you enter the gate, have signage that states that, so it's very clear. To have a badge there, it will be very visible that that's where we are, so there'd be no, no notice or no way to miss the notice if you use the proper entrance to the park that you're not supposed to be there. Now, that would take some additional signage, probably at the back where it would be known. I don't know of any issue where people have accessed the park, but error on side caution, we would put that signage there. So that's, that's the simple solution. If we can't, if we can't decide a clock time, then to remove that barrier and police it as we need to police it as best we can. The second issue that, that, so that would be our solution there. And I'd be glad to take any discussion from there. I think that probably would be best to be voted on by the board, to either set sunrise at whatever the standard is for sunrise. My, my caution there is, again, it's difficult to, to police. I know Mr. Schinkel didn't like that term, but it's difficult to manage. The other issues that you get into, if you're inviting someone in at sunrise, sunrise visibility is different on a clear day than it is on a cloudy day. So as you invite people in, if you're five minutes early, five minutes late, you invite yourself to, to problems. I'll just simply do daylight hours, police it as we need to. So that would be my suggestion moving forward. We have instituted a plan with the police department. I know there was some discussion about the park rangers no longer being armed in the park. Two reasons for that, and this leads into this follow-up. That creates an issue all its own. We wanted to remove that, simply to allow park rangers to be park rangers. To, to supplement that, we have each patrol officer, on each shift, is now required to patrol the park once on their shift. So if we have three officers on duty, that's three patrol shifts per shift that they drive through. The benefit to that is the public sees the police being through, so we have a higher police visibility than we did in the past. And it also affords our police officers to engage in the community in different ways than they typically would on a traffic stop or some other call. So the suggestion I have for you tonight, and I would request that the council at least consider this as part of an action, is just simply name the park as daylight hours, remove the gate. We'll put a, we'll put a chain there in favor of that, so if there's inclement weather or some other thing we need to, to change, we can, we can address that, so that's the quick solution.
Could we, instead of removing the gate, just leave the gate open? And in other words, to, to accommodate what you just said, if we happen to need it for inclement weather or something along those lines, we could just simply close the gate?
We certainly can.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion that the gate at the entrance of Bowie Nature Park remain open with the exception of some situation, emergency situation, or a situation that arises where the park needs to be closed due to inclement weather or otherwise, that a... that a sign or signs be placed at the entrance to Bowie Nature Park, setting the hours of operation as the daylight hours and to put individuals who may be in violation of those hours on notice, that they will be prosecuted. And that that not only be placed at the entrance, but also at various spots along the perimeter of the park.
Yes, sir. Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for working hard on coming up with a solution.
Yes.
Okay, item M, resolution number 12-17.
A resolution to dissolve the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number 13-17.
A resolution requesting a change to the Industrial Development Board bylaws. Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution number 14-17.
A resolution approving an employment contract for a city manager.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, you got a first and second discussion. I guess I'll start off. Who put this item on the agenda? How did it come about?
I did, Mayor.
Okay, so Commissioner Lucas requested to have this on the agenda. I'd like to take a few minutes and go over. I do have some input. But I did want to ask Mr. Collins first, just in the interview process. And several times you said you didn't want a contract. So I didn't know how you felt about this being put on the agenda.
Mixed emotions, to be honest with you. First off, I'm completely appreciative of Commissioner Lucas even mentioning it, some of the other commissioners. I think there's been a lot of work done in the last year, to be honest with you. Not pointing fingers at me, but everyone is a part of that. I'm not from a contract background. So that's a bit foreign to me, is how that works. However, I understand they're the business of the day. I get that that's the conditions where we are. Within that, I'm comfortable with it. I understand the needs for it. Again, I'm appreciative of that and the confidence that's in that. I also think that comes with some responsibility on my part to make sure it's fulfilled. And to that, to that standpoint, I understand the equalness and the fairness of it.
Okay, and then I had another question. You had mentioned at some point in the interview process that you had been, in your past employment, they ended up coming to a conclusion to buy you out. So you did have, you have worked under contracts.
Actually, no, ma'am. The system where I'm from was civil service. And you're a civil service employee there and you're there for the length of time that you are. Within that, they're, they're going to have to offer you something. And that's where we got there. So it was a different, it was a totally different system than what you operate under here.
Okay. Just trying to understand.
Understood.
Any other questions? I mean, I do have some things I want to bring up, but I want to give you all opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. One, I'm not necessarily opposed to a contract. Just a couple of thoughts. I do agree that Mr. Collins, he came in at a crucial and pivotal time for our city. There has been a significant amount of work done over the course of the last year. And I don't know if people realize all that has been done and where we are today versus where we was July of last year. We obviously have a new city manager in Mr. Collins. We have a new police chief. We have a new fire chief. We have a planner. We have a new city attorney. This really looks like a different place, quite frankly, than what it was a little over a year ago, right at a year ago. And in doing all of that, that's really just the foundation or the groundwork that put us in a position to actually do the real work. Not to mention that we've, we've got issues that are all, on all of our minds in terms of things that we want to see accomplished, whether it be a resolution to the water authority issue, whether it be a solution to the intersection of Cumberland Drive and Highway 100. There's just numerous, the list just goes on and on and on. I talked to Mr. Collins today, whether it be a solution to fixing that god awful landscaping that we have down the middle of our median right now. We've got a lot of work to do and we really just started with the foundation. And so I'm not opposed to a contract. I think there's some benefit to the contract. It's beneficial to Mr. Collins and knowing that he has some stability in employment. But this is the one thing that concerns me about this type of contract in particular. And I just want there to be some language added and I have not come up with that language yet. But I don't want this to be one-sided. I want the city to have some protection if Mr. Collins decides to leave for another job. I hope that doesn't happen. I think he is doing a great job and we can certainly evaluate his performance in a formal evaluation at some point in the near future. And I think we should do that. With that said, if he, if he chose to leave and he was in the middle of his contract, then I think there should be some penalty for doing that, whether it be the place that he may be going to, having to buy out a portion of his contract or pay some portion of the expense associated with us having to go through a new search for a city manager. I don't know what that language looks like. I've not thought about it. I've not put pen to paper. But I just think there should be, it should be a two-way street. You know, I use the analogy to Mr. Collins when we talked about it earlier this week, kind of like a football coach contract, you know? You get Nick Saban, you want to keep Nick Saban. But if Nick Saban, Nick Saban leaves, you want somebody to have to pay you for it. Same, same thing here. So if we can make those changes, then I'd certainly entertain looking at this and talking about it in more detail.
Well, there's a couple of things that came up the last time. This is probably... We've only had three city managers since I've been here, but believe it or not, contracts were a big conversation. So, and I know we have a new board, but one of the things that was brought up prior is, you know, giving somebody a five-year contract is normally difficult because you end up, even though I know as a city manager, you would probably prefer to have a longer, you know, contract. But it was brought up, one of the last discussions of giving somebody a contract longer than the board that sits. So like, I think there was discussion two-year, possibly three, given that one, because every two years you're gonna have to go through that change. You're gonna have new boards. You know, I, I kind of think that that, something like that could work. I, I'm D, you know, there is the option of the three-year contract, then, you know, additional years offered. That's not a bad thing. But, you know, I'd like to see it be more like three years with the option of one plus one. Is, if you read how D's worded, he's actually, or the way that it... Who drew up the contract?
I did. I, Mayor, the way that I came up with this was, there was a contract that was drafted for Andrew Hyatt. There was a contract that was drafted for Wayne Hall. There was a contract draft they used from the city of Spring Hill. So I just simply took on some parts and pieces of that and actually tried to make it a little less restrictive than what those were. So that's how that came about.
Go ahead.
Real quick, if I can just clear up something. My understanding of this contract is that, I don't know where five years came from, but I read it as three years. And after the three years, we have the option to extend for two. Am I missing something on that?
That's the way it's written.
That's the way it is. But that, what I was suggesting, because that's five if you put it together, what I'm suggesting is, you know, the option with the two committing to two. So like, instead of just making it, and I know this is, you know, Cal Metro does it, they do three and then plus one, plus one. So I just think that it gives them the option, but gives you a break in the options because you're gonna have new boards. So he, you know, the city manager can decide he wants out and it's not as long. Yes?
One issue. With all respect to Mr. Collins, attorneys are really good at writing contracts. So we probably should have an attorney put one together and give us some options on some suggested language. Unfortunately, I don't know if that should be Mr. Potter, who works for Mr. Collins technically. So I don't know if we would need to get an outside attorney or not, what the appropriate situation would be on that. I know you had to provide a sample of some sort and I appreciate you doing that. I might be a little biased in this situation. But as a general rule, Mr. Potter, what would your suggestion be?
Well, I mean, I, certainly I work for the city of Fairview. And I think that I was selected and brought to you by Mr. Collins. I think that we've got a contract that I would suggest some changes to. Think that Mr. Crutcher's statements are well taken. There's some provisions that I would put in this contract to give the city some more protection. I, I do not think it would be a conflict of interest for me to draft the contract. But certainly, I'm happy to take this as sort of a guide and some of the language, I think, is good language and we could, we could give you another product to take a look at and then you can decide from there if you think it's fair or not.
And that's why I wanted to ask. Our profession is one of self-policing, so I didn't know if that'd be a conflict or not in this situation. I figured you would be the one to know better than anybody, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, a lot of in-house attorneys for companies, they may report to somebody, but ultimately, it's their job to review employment contracts for the company. So I don't, I think that's, that happens quite often. I'll do whatever you want to do, Commissioner Burks, but I think maybe, you know, making some changes to the document and circulating it and letting you see it in advance of the next meeting. And if you feel like you'd like another set of eyes on it, then I think that you could make that decision. It would be fine.
You're good, I'm good.
Okay, so if you're gonna draw up and maybe give us some other options and suggestions, then we do have a motion and a second. If you would like to remove, we can, make it defer, you know, we can do that, or we can take it to vote.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll remove my motion and ask that we defer this until next meeting and give the attorney a chance to draw up some different options.
Okay.
Do I need to remove my second?
Yes, you do.
I will move my second.
And then, do we, we'll need a motion to defer it? No? Okay. Okay, so we'll move on and then that gives us at 10:45, item P.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm, there's nothing on here to read from, but I'll tell you what item P is. Item P is basically just us giving permission to the city manager to cut a check to Fairview High School for the items that was discussed by Coach Putnam earlier. And I would move that we approve that. That has already been part of the budget. It was already approved in the budget. We are just simply giving permission to disperse those funds.
Okay.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to clarify. It wasn't necessarily approved in the budget. It was just set aside in the budget. When we approved the budget, those funds were kind of earmarked for that. Correct?
Well, there was $250,000, from what I recall, that was, that was actually appropriated from, well, I don't know if appropriated is the right word, from the school facilities tax. That was actually part of the approved budget, as I understand it.
Yes, sir. The process was that the school facilities tax cash balance was drawn down to zero in that budget. So effectively, 100% of that balance was approved or allocated for expenditure. So there would not be a budget amendment that would be required. It'd just be simply approval to disperse the funds.
And just so I'm clear, what was that amount again?
$22,500.
Vice Mayor, I know it was not your intent because it did not get added. But my only fear is, you know, it's so hard. Like, we all want to help the kids and the school and the sports. And we know that there's such a gap. But it's awfully hard for me, knowing that there's so many other needs and there's just so, the money's gonna be gone where we could, you know, do that. But, you know, a lot of times it's first come, first served, you know, gifts. But I do love our sports programs and our community, but, you know, it's just sometimes hard that these things are just kind of thrown at us and we didn't really give everybody opportunity to buy it or bid for it. I think if other groups knew that we had 20, you know, 22,000, then, you know, they might have put in two.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry. Do we know if this is approved tonight? Do we know about how long this process will take to get this work done? In other, I guess what I'm asking is, when is this? And I'm not a baseball guy, I apologize. The tournament or whatever it is that they're planning on having, do we know when that is versus will this be done in time for that?
Tournament's this weekend. It's right now.
So we're preparing for next year's tournament? Correct?
And next year's middle school and high school teams.
Okay. So will this, I guess then my question would be, is this work gonna be done during the school year? And will that interfere with what they're trying to do? Or would it be better to do?
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that will leave us with 13 city managers' items for discussion.
Mayor, I only have three things for you tonight. I'll be brief. It shouldn't take about 90 minutes. That's a joke. The first is simply the office trailer for the planning department. We talked sometime about moving that out. The anticipation is that that will be delivered on Tuesday. We'll do some electrical work to get that installed. But hopefully, within the next 14, 21 days, we'll have the planning department staff in that facility outside this building. We'll still use the inside building for meetings, planning commission work, all those other sorts of things. But that will free up some office space here. As soon as we make that move, we'll move some additional personnel here within the building. The next thing that we'll do is start looking at how we will move the police department and court building to another location adjacent to this. So that's coming on pretty quickly. I said three, I had four. The second is, in the budget, we have approved $75,000 for a comprehensive plan. That RFQ will go out by the end of August. We should have those responses back by the end of September and have a, have a firm selected by the end of this quarter or early in the next quarter, sometime early October, a firm selected to move forward with a comprehensive plan so we can be in that process and at least be familiar with them by the first of the calendar year so we can move forward with the comp plan, which we all know is important to us to be completed sometime during calendar 18 so that we'll be able to coordinate that with the moratorium and the other processes that we've been working on. Second, or third, we discussed really at the end of last year, first of this year, about the need for a fire truck for the fire department. Obviously, we expressed some of those concerns tonight. We talked at that time about a lease purchase or some version of that. We talked at that time about a lease purchase, or some version of that, to fund that fire truck. We budgeted at that time $500,000 in theory for that project to be done on a 10-year lease purchase, which is standard in the industry for fire truck. We identified a couple of sources for that, the build time for a fire truck, and we're talking about just a regular pumper truck, we're not talking about a ladder truck or any other thing, just a standard replacement pumper to keep the fleet going, we're under 500, probably closer to 475. The build time on that truck, as we have it specked out, is roughly 380 days, so a little over a year. We will move forward with pricing on that, we will bring some financing options to you. Again, if we're looking at a lease purchase, we'll start that, and the actual cash part of that will start to take place in fiscal year 1920, or 1819. So we have some time, but the build time does take a significant amount. So as we get those bits of information back to you, likely within the next 90 days, we'll have a plan for you to move forward, or at least consider for the fire truck as we go. And lastly, this is not related to anything on the agenda, but I will say that a year ago, when I sat in this room, or a year and about five days ago, I didn't know anyone here, didn't know where Fairview was until I got here. I can tell you that the community, the staff, everyone I've met, the elected officials, current and former, and all the associations with the city have made this home pretty quickly, it's been an easy transition for me. It is not easy to move somewhere new as quickly as we did, to take on some of the issues that we had, and have to depend on people you've never met to help you in that process. And I can tell you, from my standpoint, I owe more people than I can tell you a complete thank you for making that process, and it's easy and seamless, it has been, so that applies to everyone in the process, and I just want to thank you for that, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, and Mr. Potter?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rainey?
I feel the need to commend whoever built the air conditioner in this building.
They did a good job, didn't they?
Yes, it's a wonderful air conditioner, that's all.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah, a couple of quick things tonight, Mayor, thank you. I want to congratulate all the, or welcome all the new members to the boards that we voted in tonight. Also want to, again, thank all these folks setting down front for all the work that they do behind the scenes. They really kind of make us look good, I think, as a board, and so I appreciate that. And then also, on a positive note, just, we all know what a great community we live in. I was privileged to be a part of, on, I believe it was last Friday, a mobile food pantry that was done here in Fairview at the middle school, and I handed out sweet tea all morning to a lot in the community, not just here in Fairview, but in surrounding communities, families that were in need and needed some food, and I believe, I don't know the exact number, but I do know that they were able to help over 200 families in need that morning. And so I'm thankful that we live in a community that cares about folks, and am thankful for organizations like the United Way and Grace Works that come in here and do stuff like that. And so it just made me smile that we were able to do that and be a part of helping those folks in the community. So that's all I have tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioner Burks?
I would like to say thank you for the members of the planning commission last week that went through a very, very long meeting, which I unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, missed. I had the opportunity to go out of town and chaperone a trip on a church camp with a bunch of Fairview's finest young men and women, so I appreciate y'all carrying on without me, even though I did have the pleasure of listening to that meeting on YouTube, which took quite a while to get through. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, very briefly, I know it's almost 11 o'clock. With the budget, we each have $5,000 that we can use for community development or community improvement at our discretion, as I understand it, each commissioner. I know I'm an advocate for a lot of the sports teams out here in the sports facilities. We have a U-12 baseball team that is going back to the World Series for the second year in a row. They just had to raise money to get to the state tournament over in Sweetwater, spent a week there, runner-up in the state this year, they won the state last year. Going to the World Series in any sports, any type of sport, rather, is a big deal. And, you know, it's not easy on these families to be able to do that. So what I'm going to do is with my, some of my $5,000 that is set aside for community development, I'm going to donate to the Fairview Recreation Association, earmarked for that purpose $2,000. And I say that, I said we each have $5,000, so I'm hoping, I'm not necessarily advocating that you contribute the same amount of money, but I am hoping that my fellow commissioners here would donate some money to that cause, to help offset the cost of sending those kids to Oxford, Alabama, for a week. It's a once, well, in this case, twice in a lifetime experience, and hopefully, it will be an every-year experience as they continue to go through the program. They're, they play, they're quite good, and they've earned it, so I'm asking that we all consider doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, I will keep it short, or try to, but I did want to make a couple of comments. I know that a few of my agenda items, some of the commissioners thought was not necessary to be on the agenda, and it probably wasn't, or it could have been done under one, but I think sometimes, and when you get new boards and operating and new staff, and, you know, you don't want to always do things like you've always done it, but I think understanding, like, you know, hey, I would have liked to know that my access was cut off, you know, do I have to find it out late, was the protocol, I think they're all legitimate, good questions. And just trying to learn each other, and learn what we want, and our needs, and what our strengths, and what we do best, is all part of the growing pain, and just respecting each other's, you know, abilities and roles as a board. So even though some of the conversations might be painful, and I know it's, I'll be up and going to work at 4:45, so I know these meetings are late, and we need to, I just want to thank y'all for input and trying to have some healthy discussions as we go along of why have we always done something? And, you know, what's the value of it, and trying to come up with a solution, but getting us all on the same page of what that solution is, and that we're aware of it. And then I forwarded y'all, because I think Vice Mayor may have been sliding me on this Robert Rules of Order, I have a nice little sheet that, because I didn't call for a second, you were, but anyway, I have a nice little sheet I just forwarded you, and I find it helpful to have, because it does break it down really quickly, but we all get in here and get excited, want to talk back and forth, and get, and, you know, I've not operated under you would, you know, point of orders and stuff like that, because I wanted us to all have an opportunity to speak, and, you know, Robert's Rules of Order is, you know, definitely there for a reason to keep us on structure, for we don't talk too long, but, I mean, there's a lot of things that we could be sticklers about, meaning like, you have to be called on, you have to say, Madam Chair, but, you know, we're a small town, a small community, it's not always necessary. But I forwarded that, because I just found it when I was looking up my Robert's Rules of Order for how the agenda came about, and I was trying to see where that came from, and I found that, and I just thought that might be helpful, and see if we can't try to move things quicker, and then maybe not put so many items on the agenda, maybe we can come up with that, too. But anyway, that's it, thank you, everybody, for what you do. I really appreciate all the citizens that volunteer for these boards, and just the input. And I even appreciate the lady that came out with our first sign since I've been here, and I, she didn't make it to the end, but I do appreciate coming and just having, having the passion to stand up for what you want and you believe. So if I can get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, got a second, I believe I did, all in favor? Aye.